Would remain. The C variance is required maximum number of signs per business one to propose. There was testimony from Mr. Darren Bronstein, who was a principal of the worldwide flooring. According to him, when he relocated his business, there were two signs for the Gap and Baby Gap stores. When Mr. Bronstein relocated his business, the Kitchen and Bath Studio Store sells and provides services for kitchen and bath items, has a separate entrance, separate employees, separate operations from the worldwide flooring business, which only sells flooring related products. He noted that both entities have separate LLCs, although they operate under the same umbrella. And finally, the sign would be for identification purposes and smaller in size than the existing worldwide signage. The application was approved on June 17th, and you are memorializing the resolution this evening. Jim, I think you're muted.
Jim, you're muted.
The bird was getting a little loud again. I gotta send him outside. Board members, you've heard the resolution.
Hopefully, in the cage. Sorry.
Is someone gonna move the resolution, please?
I'll move it, Dohurst.
Is there a second?
Second, Kilduff.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dohurst?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Mr. Skagno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Sakowski?
Yes.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. I don't think when we go back to the courtroom, you want me to bring him with with me. The next one is eighty-three dish two oh twenty twenty Z two G Core Farm LLC, Mr. Sax.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is applicant two G Core Farm LLC, block five thousand lot twenty. Property located at Core Farm Road. This application was heard on March fourth of twenty twenty-one, June third of twenty twenty-one. Property located in the R twenty low medium density residential zone. The applicant proposes to subdivide the lot to create thirty-three lots containing a total of thirty-five dwelling units of the thirty thirty-five units. Twenty-eight would be two family dwellings and seven affordable units were initially proposed to be located in multi-family structure. I'll get to that in a second. The duplexes would have two car garages. Also, two private streets would be constructed Lucy Court and Lola Drive. Four foot wide sidewalks landscaping throughout the property. Open space on a separate lot to be maintained by the homeowners association. Construction of an infiltration basin on a separate lot to be maintained by the homeowners association. Construction of ten parallel on-street parking spaces along Lola Drive. Construction of twelve parking spaces on either side of Lucy Court adjacent to the multi-family, the proposed multi-family dwellings. D one use variance is required as multi-family dwellings or two family dwellings are not permitted in the zone. As well, a D four Flurry Ratio variance was required and also a D five density variance. As to the Flurry Ratio, point three five is proposed, whereas point one seven is is the maximum. And a density of four point three two unit take per acre is proposed, whereas the maximum is one point eight units per acre. There was testimony from Mr. Kevin Shelley, professional engineer, Mr. John Jar, traffic engineer, and Mr. Dave Roberts, professional planner. During the course of the hearing, and I'm referencing now some conditions that are going to be imposed here. First of all, the applicant agreed that the proposed garages cannot be converted into living space, that the number of units shall not exceed thirty-five, and that the proposed affordable housing units, which were going to be in two multi-family structures, will be integrated and mixed in throughout the community with the understanding that the proposal will be redesigned during the site plan stage to eliminate the multi-family buildings with no less than twenty percent of all units being affordable units. And finally, a top lot or similar recreation area will be provided at the site plan stage. This was an application, and it was bifurcated for D one, D four, and D five use variance, which was granted. The applicant will have to come back for site plan approval, preliminary and final at a later date. And this is the resolution that you're memorializing tonight.
Mr. Sax, board members, someone move the resolution?
I'll move it.
Mr. Stoner, is there a second?
I'll second, Kilduff.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Sakowski?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. We have one escrow deficiency resolution. It's eighty-three. Also, it's the same one, eighty-three twenty twenty Z two G Core Farm Road LLC. And twenty-five hundred dollars. However, it has been paid. Does someone want to move that, please?
I'll move it. Stoner.
Stoner, I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dohurst?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Mr. Skagno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Sakowski?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Board members, that takes us into our two C variances for the evening. First one is twenty-three dish twenty twenty-one Z. It's Nassima and Bashir Belkassimi. That's located at one twelve Madison Avenue, block one eight oh three five lot nineteen. This is in the R six zone for a new entry foyer, ten by ten foot, requiring a C variance. Is Mr. or Mrs.?
I see them.
Are you both gonna testify? Folks?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, the board attorney will swear you in.
Okay, if you can both please raise your right hands. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I swear.
Okay, thank you. Each of you separately state your name, spelling your last name and address for the record.
Okay. Nassima N A S S I M A. The last name B E L K A C E M I. The address is one one two Madison Avenue, Old Bridge, New Jersey, zero eight eight five seven.
Sir, if you can do the same?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just state your name and spell your name for the record.
It's Bashir, B A C H I R, and the last name is the same, Belkassimi, B E L K A C E M I. And I live in one twelve Madison Avenue, Old Bridge, zero eight eight five seven.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
All right, Mr. and Mrs. Belkassimi, we have an application. We realize that you want to make an addition, some change to your home. So what we're gonna ask you to tell the board is what you want to do, why you're doing it, how it's going to be accomplished. I know we have some pictures that the board has received. And then we're gonna ask the zoning officer why you're here in front of us. Why do you seek the variances? Why do you need the variances? He may have some questions, or he's probably gonna have some statements to the board. We may have some questions of you. You may have some questions of us. At some point, we're gonna reach the end where I'm gonna ask if you would like us to take a vote. Prior to taking that vote, I'm gonna go to a public portion. So in your own words, why don't you just, whoever wants to start, tell the board really just what you want to do?
Okay, all right. So what I want to do is, the door actually, it's when I opened the door, it's actually here in the other door for the closet, and twice my door broke. And I actually show it to the zoning people when they came to see it. And also, it's cold to the stairs. Plus, there is also a lot of cold from that area. So no matter what I do, it's always cold. So I wanna actually take the door and put it to the side without actually changing any norms. And I already passed the electric outside because I have, I have electrics to the outside.
Okay, anything else you want to tell us at this point?
So that's exactly why I want to do this.
Okay. Let me ask the zoning officer why this would require a variance. Mr. Gill?
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening. Good evening, members of the board. As the applicant has stated, the application is for a front foyer. The application was denied by my office for the following reasons. The applicant was proposing the construction of a new front entry foyer, which is approximately ten by ten foot in dimension, and would have a front yard of approximately fifteen feet, where a minimum of twenty-five foot is required. The applicant requires a front yard variance, along with any other variances may require. So we didn't identify any other conditions. And the survey that was received at the time of application with the zoning office was just the survey. We didn't have this map, which is a little bit more precise. Looking at it here, it doesn't appear that anything's changed from my denial to to what's being presented before the board this evening. It just is a little bit more fleshed out, and now I can see what it's constructed to be. So it looks like it's a side-loading front entry with a gabled front foyer off approximately the center of the house. Miss, Mr. or Mrs., I'm sorry, how do you pronounce your last name?
Belkassimi.
Belkassimi. So there, it looks like on the original survey that we received, you had an existing front porch that was already about half the width of the house. Is that, so if I'm reading these plans correctly, you're gonna be removing that front porch for this front foyer, is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
All right. Was that porch previously roofed?
No, right now, right now it's not roofed, but what what we do that that takes is gonna be roof, of course.
And now, if I'm reading correctly, on this plan, the where the front porch was, in addition to this front foyer, it looks like you're doing a planter, like a like a planter up against the front of the building, is that correct?
Yes.
What do you mean, planter? I'm sorry, sorry.
It says, I'm seeing here where it says existing planters, but with the survey that I have, unfortunately, I can't share it with you. I don't know if the board has it, but it looked like there was a front porch on the front half of the home. That doesn't seem to be reflected here. Kim?
What?
Am I, do I have the, do I have the wrong application here or the wrong survey?
No, this was one that he had given me later on, a big one.
So?
You you have the one that that you gave me.
The one that was originally filed, right? All right, so Mr. Mr. Belkassimi, then, do you recall the survey?
That's the next one.
What was that?
That's a.
Which one? This one? No, this is.
That's the drawing.
That's the drawing. That's the new drawing. This is the first time I'm seeing this drawing.
Yeah, this is the drawing.
The drawing that you have is the one that was submitted originally, this I got later on.
Okay, so then, I guess then, Mr. My question would then be, Mr. Belkassimi or Mrs. Belkassimi, according to the original survey you submitted, there was a concrete walk that went up to a front porch. Is that front porch still there today?
The porch, we don't have porch.
We don't have porch.
Just the door. Just the stairs.
Okay.
The porch was before when we bought the house.
This is with the old owner.
The old owner.
Oh, okay. All right. So then what you're saying is that that front porch has been gone?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So all right, now I'm looking at a street view. So right now, you just have four steps that go up.
Correct.
Four steps to go up, and then like a masonry.
Yes, sir.
Planter boxes. Okay, all right, then. Okay, then Chairman, I really don't have anything else for the applicant.
Is, when I'm looking at the picture of the planters on both sides, if this is gonna come out ten foot from the house, so it's going, it's going obviously beyond the planter box, right?
Oh, definitely. It looks like it's gonna come out approximately three or four feet to the edge of the the walkway. So where the existing walkway is, it looks like it's coming out to about where that walkway is, and that walkway is about three feet.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Gill?
No, that's all, Chairman.
Questions for Mr. Gill and any of the board members? I can't see all of you right now, those are the drawings up, so you're gonna have to make a statement if you want to say anything that is the question. Okay. Mr. and Mrs. Belkassimi, is there anything else you want to tell the board?
No, actually, to be honest, because like I just said, it's really cold in winter. And plus, the door, always, I have a problem. I change it twice because of the glass, it broke because of the knob. Now, the knob, when the zoning came, I showed them how actually I put a sponge, and I had to put a sketch tape just in case, because sometimes my kids, when they open the door, it doesn't break again. Plus, it also hits the stairs. So it's really uncomfortable. It's not.
It was probably a poor design originally, I guess, right?
I'm sorry?
I say, it must have been a poor design originally.
Yeah, that's exactly how I bought the house, and I was never happy, to be honest. And I was thinking to move, and then, you know, because I did some, you know, the invasion, I said, you know what? Let me just try to change the door and stay here, because I like the area. I'm happy where I am.
Well, we want, we want you to stay here, too. We want you to stay in Old Bridge.
Thank you.
Would you mind if I go to a public portion right now and see if anybody wants to comment on this?
Sure.
Okay, this is matter twenty-three dish twenty twenty-one Z. The location is one one two Madison Avenue. It's for a new ten by ten entry foyer. If there's anyone wants to comment or questions or ask questions on this matter, please call one of the phone numbers that you see in front of you on whatever device you're watching us on. We'll wait about thirty seconds to see if anyone calls in. Is anyone in the queue? No raised hands at this point? We'll just wait thirty seconds or so. And Mr. and Mrs. Belkassimi, anything else you want to tell the board? Because what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask you a question after this, and it's gonna be, do you want us to take a vote?
Yeah.
And I'll come back to you in a minute. Mr. Sax, let me know when we've given sufficient time.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Yeah, I wanna just add something, like I said, you know, like my wife said, that
Sure.
Well, what, the what we did, the set variance, we didn't change the norms or anything, like the crosswalk, the the wall, the the crosswalk, he stayed the same. It's only the the direction of the door. The norms is gonna be all the same, no inch extra or 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 nothing.
Right, that's understood.
Yeah, thank you, honor.
And it looks quite nice, but I'm sure it'll, I'm sure it'll look nice with the entry.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I think we can close the public portion.
Public portion on this matter is closed. Board members, any final comments or questions? Hearing none. Mr. Belkassimi, would you like me to take go for a vote? With, sir, would you like me to take a vote?
Yes.
Okay. This is the, this is for, it's going to be a setback issue in front yard. So it's going from, I believe, twenty-five to fifteen. So it'd be ten foot. So board members, if anyone wants to move this for approval, it's simply for the setback in the front yard.
Connor, your approval?
I hear Mr. Connor has, you in support of the variance, sir?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second in support?
Hand for second.
Ms. Andrews. Ms. Andrews, second.
Okay.
When we do that, she's an alternate and.
Oh, okay.
That's fine.
I'll second it. Stoner.
Thank you. Mr. Stoner, I believe, has seconded. We'll take a roll call, please.
Okay. Mr. Dohurst?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Mr. Skagno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Sakowski?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
My vote is certainly yes, folks, and I and I hope you, I hope you do stay here in Old Bridge. You've made another investment, you've made an investment in your home, your family, so we we want, it makes us a community of stronger people, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great for resolution.
We have a resolution, resolution.
Mr. Sax, resolution?
Yes, yeah, we have a resolution. This is application twenty-three dash twenty twenty-one Z. Nassima and Bashir Belkassimi. Property one twelve Madison Avenue, block one eight zero three five lot nineteen. It's to permit construction of a ten foot by ten foot new entry foyer, which will be located fifteen feet from the front yard where a twenty-five foot front yard setback is required. Property in the R six zone. The only condition of approval, construction to be completed within one year of the issuance of the building permit.
Board members, someone want to move the resolution?
Move it, Skagno.
Second it, Stoner.
Move in second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dohurst?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Mr. Skagno?
Yes.
Sorry.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Sakowski?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Good luck, folks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. God bless you.
Next matter is thirty-three dish twenty twenty-one Z. This is Inga Sequera. Fifty-eight Oakland Road, block one three three zero six, lot twenty-four. It's the R twenty. This is a corner lot property for an in-ground pool and gazebo. My recollection is that they've been before us for the fence back in March. Miss Sequera, are you gonna be the only one testifying?
Yes, yeah.
Board attorney will swear.
Only one tonight.
Okay.
Ma'am, please raise your right hand. I'll swear you in. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name, spelling your last name and address for the record.
Inga Sequera, S E Q U E I R A fifty-eight Oakland Road, Old Bridge, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. You you know, you already know the the rules and what we need to hear. Obviously, your your experience there, because you came for a fence, as I recall, for six foot, where five is allowed. And you have a rather big lot, and I remember you talking about, I think, children, and you wanted to put a pool in at some point, right?
Correct. I didn't realize how having a corner lot means almost everything becomes a variance.
Yes.
So so we added that, we added that gazebo at the last minute, so just in case we want to buy it, we're gonna get it. Um, as you can see, like you said, you see we have a big lot, so we want to create the pool to be more centered to our lot rather than to our house. If we centered it to our building, we wouldn't be leaving ourselves much room to get out of our out of our patio off the kitchen or our deck or anything like that. So we're just hoping to use more of our lot space.
Okay. Let me ask Mr. Gill about this, okay, Ms. Sequera? Mr. Gill?
Damien?
I don't see him.
I hit the mute button, and for some reason, it didn't work. I apologize. Thank you, Chairman. As you and Ms. Sequera, the applicant, stated, they were before us not too long ago, and and their permit application was in transit. It literally hit my desk right after they got their approval for the fence. So I do lament that we weren't able to capture this before. But as Ms. Sequera stated, the property is a corner property, and it does present some challenges when it comes to accessory structures. As you can see from the survey that's on the screen right now, the building is placed, though it is a big lot, is placed far on the left side of the property, leaving a very nice and expansive front yard along Trans Old Bridge. And while she has a good-sized backyard, there is a lot of land which is technically front yard. And the applicant is trying to make full use of that. By placing the pool where she has placed it, and by her interest in placing the gazebo where she wants to place it, we do have two issues. They, the applicant is proposing an accessory structure in the front yard where only pools are permitted, or where only where accessory structures are only permitted in the side or the rear yard. A variance for the pool placement and the gazebo, along with any other variances, there's exceptions or waivers are required. As we're aware, because of the technical nature, we have two front yards here. And if this was an interior lot, they wouldn't be before us this evening. The very fact that they're a corner property is what necessitates these variances. If you look at the survey and the pool placement and the gazebo placement, they are correctly placed in terms of their setback requirements from those property lines, with the exception of the right property line along Trans Old Bridge, again, because it's a corner property. That's really all I have this evening for the board.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. It's interesting that you noted that if this property were not on a corner, we wouldn't be having this conversation anymore.
Correct, correct.
Board members, do you have any questions of Mr. Gill or the applicant at this point? Okay, I don't see any. Mr. Sax, is this one C variance or two, because it's two structured?
Well, it's, it requires two C variances, one of them for the pool and one of them for the gazebo. I mean, obviously, they're triggered because it's a corner lot, and they're infringing in the front yard. But we'll take one, yeah, we'll take one vote on it, but it's, there's, yes.
Ms. Sequera, how well hidden is the gazebo going to be? I mean, I don't know.
Exactly where you told me I had to have it. So I I happened to add that while I was in your office, filling out the paperwork for it. And we confirmed with Damian, how how far off do I have to be from the fence and whatnot? So that's kind of why you see that's handwritten rather than typed in. So basically, we're all about, tell us what to do, and we'll get it done the right way. And that's why I put that in there.
Okay, thank you so much. Do you have a problem if I go to the public portion right now?
No problem at all.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just before we do that, just piggybacking and to answer your question a little further. As you recall, the board did approve a six-foot fence that will be enclosing that area. So while the gazebo will be slightly larger, by and large, it will be screened from view. And as the survey indicated, there's a large larger-than-normal right-of-way along Trans Old Bridge because of the funky bend in the road. So the property, while it's only a ten-foot setback, will appear to be closer to twenty-five or thirty feet off the road, more in line with what we're used to seeing.
Right, right. I visited the property during the fence application, so I understand what you're saying. All right, I'm gonna open the public on the, open this matter to the public. It's thirty-three dish twenty twenty-one Z. The location is fifty-eight Oakland Road. It's a corner lot, so it's two front yards. And they want to put in a pool and a gazebo behind their fence. If you are watching us at home and you want to have a comment on this matter or questions, please call one of the phone numbers that you see in front of you, at which time we will put you in queue and listen to your comments. Is anyone in queue at present?
There are people, but no one, no one with raised hands.
Okay. We'll just give this about thirty seconds, see if anyone calls in for this matter. Absent that, then of course, you know I'm gonna ask if you want me to take a vote, Ms. Sequera.
Please.
I just have to wait till the legal people tell me it's okay to close. One for the, one for the pool, it's one for each accessory structure.
I had a question, sir.
Mr. Skagno, you moving it?
I did have, no, I did have a question. I was raising my hand.
Go right ahead.
Okay, ma'am, you have two gates to the front yard, and then now you have a gate in the back where the pool equipment is going to be.
I actually have three gates. I have two front gates and one in the back, and they're all self-latching.
So you're gonna keep that one in the back continuously locked? Because of the, because of the pool?
Whatever I'm required to do, keep it locked, you know, it's not, it's really more for the equipment, not for the kids or anyone else. It's not even for the landscaper. The landscaper uses our front.
The front, yes, but the back also has a gate, right? Where the pool is, yeah. So you might want to consider keeping that locked.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion, but I don't think that's really the purview of the board at this point. But yes, it's probably great, a great suggestion that the homeowner would probably want to do anyway. Is someone gonna move this, then?
I'll move it, Dohurst.
Mr. Dohurst, and I will second the matter. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dohurst?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Mr. Skagno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Sakowski?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Do we have a resolution, Mr. Sax?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is application thirty-three dash twenty twenty-one Z. Applicant Inga Sequera, property located fifty-eight Oakland Road, block one three three zero six, lot eight twenty-four. It's an application to permit the construction of an in-ground pool and a gazebo, which will be thirteen by fifteen foot next to the pool. Two variances required. First of all, is an in-ground pool in the front yard area, and secondly, a gazebo in the front yard area, which is an accessory structure. The conditions of approval, construction to be completed within one year of the issuance of the building permit.
Thank you, Mr. Sax. You've heard the resolution, board members, someone want to move it?
Connor, I'll I'll move it.
Is there a second for adoption?
Second. Second, Kilduff.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dohurst?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Mr. Skagno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Sakowski?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Best of luck to you on your pool. Are you gonna get it in before the summer's over?
It'll probably be in, but not in time to use it because of this little delay, but it's fine. We we always thought we would have it just to start next season, so at least it'll be hopefully done, just to get it open for next season.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you, and again, thank you, everyone, especially to Kim and Damian for everything they've helped me through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Good evening, Ms. Sequera.
Good night.
Okay, we move on to our.
Chairman Sullivan, I just want to make an announcement before we proceed. We're having a technical difficulty in on YouTube Live, so the meeting right now is not being live on YouTube. The technician is trying. We are still live on the TV, Um, but uh, we don't have the YouTube connection, so all residents trying to watch the meeting on YouTube. We are trying our best and we should be there shortly. Um, Mr. Sacks, I hope that's not an issue uh, to continue the meeting.
Now, as long as this, I know this, this is being broadcast, I guess, on OBTV as well.
I can see it, Larry.
Yeah, so that feed is okay. Uh, that's fine. We can proceed forward.
Thank you.
Mine goes off, I'll let you know, but I can see the, uh, I can actually see it being broadcast live.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. One. All right, the applications will be called in order. Uh, I'm gonna call the first one. It's a nine dash uh, twenty twenty-one Z Fountains at Old Bridge LLC. This is the R twenty. It's a block one oh two five three lot nine point one one. Set three Old Mill Road and ninety Spring Hill. This was a two-story townhouse building, plain on units, each clubhouse, gazebo, driveways, parking, man shaped lighting. This is for final major site plan. Steve Goen is representing the applicant. Mr. Goen?
Good evening. Nice to see everybody again. Um, so correct, Mr. Chairman, this is uh, Fountains at Old Bridge LLC. Um, the board may remember, we were here, uh, we obtained D one, D four, D five uh, variances by resolution dated February twenty-first, twenty nineteen. Um, and then we also obtained preliminary site plan approval by resolution dated October fifteenth, twenty twenty. So we are just here for final site plan approval. Um, the final site plan, as you'll hear from Mr. Delaney, our engineer, uh, substantially complies with the site plan that was approved at preliminary. We've made a couple of adjustments. Um, we do have an engineering review letter uh, from Environmental Resolutions Inc. dated July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. And we will be able to comply with all of the recommendations in that review letter. So I think what I'd like to do is bring up Mr. Delaney and have him walk us through the site plan. So Sean, are you on?
I am.
Hi, Sean. Yeah, let me swear you in. Please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the true self you got?
I do.
Okay, please state your name, spelling your last name, professional affiliation for the record.
Sure. My name is Sean S E A N Delaney, D E L A N Y. I'm a principal with Bowman Consulting in Freehold, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey since two thousand and three. Uh, my license is in good standing. I've appeared before this board, has been the engineer of record for this application.
Yes, thank you. This board recognizes your expertise and you did uh, you were the uh, you were of record on this, the original matter, so we certainly accept you.
Correct. I, I have one more thing just to say, though. I also am a licensed professional planner, licensed since two thousand and eight in New Jersey. As there is a variance uh, that we are requesting today, I will be testifying towards that as well. And I've testified before numerous boards throughout the state on various C and, and, and it's a few D variances as well.
We'll accept your credentials.
Thank you. You don't have to, you don't have to brag, Sean. I think we're already there. Um, Sean, do you want to, uh, actually, before you do, Sean, while you pull up the site plan exhibit that you prepared, um, I just want to mention to the board that the project is now called uh, Hamley Orchards at Old Bridge. Um, and that was due to an accommodation with um, the pro- the former property owner. Our client closed title about two months ago. Uh, is now the owner of the property. Um, but we agreed with the former owner to name it Hamley Orchards at Old Bridge, um, which is a family name for the prior seller. So, but going forward, we'll be referring to it as Hamley Orchards. Um, Sean, do you want to uh, pull up the site plan?
I, I do. I just need permission to uh, bring it up?
Uh, Sean, give me a second. Uh, for some reason, uh, I don't have the site plan uh, with me and um, the um, uh, the host is going to assign you as a co-host, so in a minute, you should be able to share.
Thank you. If need be, I can start with some basic information while we're waiting for the plan to come up.
Do you want to do that, Sean, just so we're not killing a bunch of time here?
Yeah, the, the site is fairly, the board knows, should know the site fairly well from the multiple uh, meetings we've had, so. Um, just some basic.
It's only, only our fifth hearing, Sean, so I think.
So the site is located along uh, Spring Hill Road and Old Mill Road, uh, dual frontages. As was mentioned, it's block one oh two five three lot nine point one one, approximately uh, just, just short of six and a half acres in area. Um, it does contain at, along the uh, Spring Hill Road, uh, frontage, a one hundred foot JCPN L uh, right-of-way easement that, that traverses diagonally across the property. Um, as we proposed uh, as, as part of the, as was approved previously, we are proposing a, an age restricted residential rental community consisting of fifty-eight residential units in two, two-story buildings. Each building will have twenty-nine units. They will be nineteen one-bedroom and thirty-nine two-bedroom units, I believe, uh, with affordable housing as required set aside um, per the regulations. Uh, we are also proposing a two thousand square foot uh, com- uh, community building um, on the site, uh, which while, which is the same, same location, hasn't been moved since the uh, prior approval. And I do have access now. Um, I want to make sure I get the right one. Thank you very much. So um, the plan I'm referring to is the layout, or up on the screen is the layout and dimensioning ten, cheap four twenty-five of the final site plans that were submitted, last revised six twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one. As you can see, um, along the eastern property line of the two uh, uh, rental buildings, each with twenty-nine units. Uh, Old Mill Road, Road is on the right or the north side of the page and Spring Hill Road is on the left or southwest corner uh, of the property, of, of the uh, the sheet on, on the page. Um, drive aisle circulation, um, all the onsite circulation locations, parking areas, they remain unchanged in their locations. Uh, we do have um, fire lanes as well on either side of the building. And another one that goes out to Old Mill Road through the parking lot to the north of the clubhouse, but also unchanged uh, from the prior approvals. A hundred and fourteen parking spaces on site, where a hundred and twelve are required. Nine by eighteen stalls, five handicap spaces, um, all remaining the same. Utilities on the site, uh, water and sewer being fed from Old Mill Road and um, New Jersey thirty-four into the site and down through the center drive aisle to serve all three buildings. Electric, gas and telephone, all that stuff will remain, will be, will be run underground as was testified during the preliminary approvals. Um, so what has changed uh, on the site, and there hasn't been much. Uh, most of it was compliance with the uh, the previous review, review letter from uh, ERI. Um, as part of the preliminary approval and, and as conditions, but um, what has changed? We added a, in the southern corner of the site, next to the building off the main drive aisle into the site, we've added another uh, trash enclosure and recycling enclosure for access for that building. We did have one at the northern side. And that was a recommendation by ERI to add a second one due to the size and proximity um, to the, to that building.
Sean?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but um, I have to bring this to the board's attention. I just spoke to our board attorney. Um, I see an issue here. The site plan was not put up on our township's website. And which means the people have not, the residents have not got a chance to uh, review it because we are conducting electronic meetings and I think that is a problem. Because the architectural plan is on the township's website. Um, the conservation officer, the documents, every other document is there, but I don't see a site plan because when you were reading, I tried to go on our township's website to share it from there directly. So I didn't have the site plan, but at the same time, uh, the township's website didn't have it either.
Okay, I know, I know the, the um, in terms of a delivery standpoint, the, the documents were delivered on July first to Ms. Silverman's office. And we, they were emailed also to her as well as to Mr. Darji uh, later that afternoon. Um, I wouldn't, I would point out and note that Mr. Darji did, in his review letter, he does reference the, the site plans that I'm, that I'm showing on the screen right now, so. Um, I don't, if, if they were not posted on the website, I don't know why. I wasn't informed. Uh, I wasn't informed if they hadn't been received or weren't able to be opened or, or something like that. Um, so it's the first I'm hearing of it.
Mr. Sacks?
Yeah, let's uh, by the way, let's take this off the screen for a second, if we can, before I respond.
So again, Sacks?
Yeah, Mr. Delaney, take off the site plan, just, yeah.
The library does have a copy.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know that every board member has a, has a hard copy. Uh, I have a hard copy, but the problem I, the problem is, according to Ms. Savant, is that it is not posted on the township website, so that the public does not have a copy. Um, so we've, we've got an issue with this.
This is the screen. I, I'm sorry, Larry, this is the screen of the township website and clearly the site plan is missing.
I think maybe it was too big for it to go on?
I don't know.
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, well, I, I think we have a, we have a, we, we would have a problem with proceeding forward at this point. I know, I'm sure the applicant doesn't want to hear that. But um, you know, there, we, we've got to follow, we've got to follow the rules and I, I agree, it's the pandemic and it's a different world and we wouldn't even be doing this if, if we had a meeting in person, the plans would be there and they could certainly be examined and they certainly could be examined in the office of the Planning and Engineering Department uh, on file at least ten days before, and I'm sure they were, but for some reason it just not, did not get posted uh, to the uh, to the website.
Hey, uh, Larry, is, is any version of the site plan posted there? Like the prior, the, the original one that we submitted or just not the one that we submitted on seven?
I don't think any, I, I'm just looking at the PDFs here. All I see is application wetlands, letter to conservation officer.
Go back, go back to the, there is a, uh, another one.
June, June third, I think. We, we, we were originally scheduled for the meeting and we, we, we pulled it and postponed the application.
There's only one folder for uh, fountains, and that's what we have.
Okay, we don't have June still up there? Okay. I thought we did.
Larry, you think we're covered by, did, did you take a look at our public notice, the bottom section? Do you think we're covered by that language? Well, I don't even know if there's any. Go ahead, sorry.
The, the problem is, is that we, you know, I, I, I just know that since the pandemic started, we've been posting everything on the website. And I don't, I have, I don't, I'd have to pull out the notice. Um, let me take a look at the notice real quick. Actually, Steve, I'm not sure I have quick accessibility to your notice here. I'm just, just looking.
You in front of your, uh, in front of the computer, Larry?
Uh, well, uh, well, I'm in front of my, I'm in front of my computer, but I'm just looking at my, I have the file here, let me just see if you know this is in here. What does your language say? Read it to me.
Yeah, I'll treat it. So um, the bottom paragraph that we have is, uh, this notice is given in accordance with the MLUL. Any interested person may appear in person through his attorney or through his designated agent at the hearing to be heard in the application. A copy of the application and supporting documentation is on file with the board secretary in the Township's Community Development Department located at one Old Bridge Plaza, Old Bridge, New Jersey. Um, the application and supporting documents are available for public inspection through the following link. Then we have the link to the oldbridge.com slash zoning board. The board secretary is Kim Silverman. Her phone number is, we have her phone number, her email address, we have her email. Application materials are also available for review through applicants council, which may, I have my phone or my email. Any interested member of the public is encouraged to contact Ms. Silverman using the contact information above. If there are any questions about the hearing, accessing the public meeting via Zoom platform or obtaining copies of the application documents and related materials. The application documents and related materials may also be obtained from Mr. Goen upon request, so. We have a couple of different options.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. And the building has been open since uh, for quite some time now, so someone could come in, a member of the public could come in and examine the drawings. Um, you know, my concern, and it really should be your concern as well, is I would worry about uh, somebody after the fact coming in and saying, well, you know, you didn't put it on the township website and you know, you, you haven't complied with the, with the notice requirements that are in the notice, because the notice, the notice also states that you've got several ways of viewing this, but obviously, one of those ways hasn't been accomplished, so I, I think you're at risk, Steve, if you go forward uh, without having that site plan on the, on the website.
Yeah, understood. Um, you, you want to just give me a, can I pause this for a half second, talk to my client for a second?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Sacks, if there was any other witnesses, could we listen to them tonight?
I think he's his only witness.
Oh, okay. It answers the question.
And, and by the way, I, I envision that Mr. Delaney's testimony would be quite brief, because he's probably gonna say that he's going to uh, comply with all of Mr. Darji's requests. Uh, so anyway.
So is, I mean, my client, if, if the, if the board's okay with Mr. Sacks and, and, and you're okay with it, my client will go forward at his risk, understanding that, you know, obviously there, there could potentially be an issue, but he'd like to move forward.
Okay. I mean, that's your, you're right. It's certainly the applicant's risk. Um, I will state that you, you know, the, the plans were available, you know, at the Department of Planning and Engineering, they could be inspected.
Actually, but before we make, before we make that call, um, do, do you mind if we just throw it out there to the public to see if there is anybody out there that is going to comment on this? I don't know that we have anybody here. We didn't have anybody at the last hearing.
Mr. Sacks?
Um, yeah, we could do that. I mean, I'm looking at the attendees and I see uh, Mr. Bolton, who's your client. OBTV, uh, Mr. Mario Galarzo and something ten twenty-two, so. Yeah, why don't we just briefly go to the public portion and just see if uh, if there's anybody who's got any issue with this? And then let's come back and then we'll.
I mean.
That would not be the only public portion.
No, this will not be the only public portion.
I, I, I think, Larry, it would really be, does anybody have an issue with the notice that was provided, right? That would kind of be the question at this point.
I just want to see if there's anybody in the public who's interested in this application, so let's see if there is anybody.
All right, nine dash twenty twenty-one Z, we're gonna open this up to public comment at this point. Uh, reference a, a matter of notification. Uh, if you have uh, questions or you want to make a comment, please call one of the phone numbers that you see on the screen in front of you and we'll put you in queue and accept your call. At this point, is there anyone in queue? I don't see Mr. One. I think she's muted right now.
No raised hands.
Right, just so the public knows at home, this is not the only public portion on this matter. Should it continue, there will be a later public portion on the same matter. You want to call, you have to call now, please.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think we can uh, close this portion of it.
We will close the public portion uh, at this juncture. I'll go back to you, Mr. Sacks.
Okay, so getting back to uh, what we were talking about, Mr. Goen, if you want to proceed forward, you're proceeding forward at your own risk. Um, I, I do, I do agree with you that there are several methods of how the public could have been informed at this application, considering the municipal building is, is reopened. So, but you're.
Yeah, I, I understand. No, we, we understand, but we'd like to move forward. I, I appreciate, uh, appreciate you working with us on that. And, and this, this is not the first time that we've had to deal with something like this over the past eighteen months, so um, you know, understand and appreciate the concern. So, you know, understand and appreciate the concern.
Okay.
That was, that was also about the longest 30 seconds waiting for somebody to dial in that I've, I've had to sit through in a while. So glad we got through it. So Sean, you want to, you want to put the site plan back up?
Yes.
All right.
All right.
So thanks, everybody. So let's, let's keep rolling, Sean.
All right. Thank, thank you very much. So we go back to, we start again with what's been changed on the site plan. We added a second trash enclosure and recycling area on the southern, on the southern side of the property adjacent to the, the southern building. We still maintain the existing one on the north side. That was a recommendation from the RI during the preliminary approval. In addition, we had a sidewalk out to that, to that area. We've also added a sidewalk out to Old Mill Road. There were some concerns, I'll talk about that a little lady about the steepness of the sidewalk coming in off the main drive aisle into the site and the ADA accessibility possibilities for it. We are proposing this drive, the, the second sidewalk out here to be the ADA accessible route from the property out to the public right of way. Also felt this was a, probably a more logical locations than there are commercial businesses and across, along Route 34 in that area that people could get to as opposed to on Spring Hill Road where we just basically have a dead end sidewalk that doesn't go anywhere at this time. The big, one of the biggest changes that occurred, and this was through discussions with Mr. Darji that we had after the preliminary hearing, we added a third surface or stormwater basin at the top of the hill in the, in some of the open area. This basin will function as, as somewhat like a four bay before discharging down into the, the main basin that acts as an infiltration and stormwater detention basin. This, this basin handles the runoff from about the midpoint of the site north. The pavement will discharge into that, the water quality and two-year storm are held in there and discharged down into the basin and larger storms and then kicked back out into a storm, storm pipe system and then discharged in a different location. We did that trying, trying to limit the amount, trying to get the water out of here a little bit faster than.
What else can go wrong today?
Through one, through one pipe, we are noticed, so we do notice and I'm going to just quickly go to the grading plan sheet five of 25 of the set. Then we do have some steep slopes that go down to the rear of the adjacent property. So we wanted water to be able to discharge back through here and get down here and try to limit the potential impacts that could occur through here. We've also put a snowway in this area with a line channel that goes down into the basin directly that way. So the water will once again stays away from the adjacent property.
There's no, no one interested in this, so.
Hey, Sean, Sean, why don't you just pause for a second because let's wait till Mr. Sax gets back.
Right, exactly.
This is a little background noise.
Yeah, I, I see very limited people, so I don't.
Absolutely. Oh, my God. We need to get back, we need to have live meetings. We have to have that. Okay.
Does he need to mute himself?
There we go.
Okay.
I'm scared of what he's going to say when he gets back in that chair, but why don't you keep going?
Okay. The, with the addition of this basin, the, the basins that we had previously, the one base, the one surface infiltration basin down by the Spring Hill Road, the underground basin we have behind the, around pipe system behind the two apartment buildings. And this third basin, the site still complies with the stormwater management regulations as outlined in the residential set improvement standards for quantity, quality and groundwater recharge. We are, we did add, we're back, I'm going back to sheet four of 25, this layout and dimensioning plan. We did add a monument sign located at the site entrance off of Spring Hill Road. That sign is set 13 feet back from the right, right away, sorry, 11.3 feet back from the right of way. We are proposing that sign to be a 40 square foot sign, four foot by 10 foot. There'll be six feet from grade to the top of the sign, based on a pedestal, externally illuminated and it's for the identification of the development. As noted in Mr. Darji's report, the, the sign requires a variance as it is 40 square feet where only 20 square feet is permitted. As the comment number seven in his report. Putting my planners hat on real quickly, the, as I said, the sign is for the identification of the development. I believe that the variant, that variance is the same size sign that we had for the residential component of the Oak Tree Plaza project on Route 34. It's set back far enough from the road to provide the visibility but not be a, it's not an over, over drastically oversized sign for this type of use. I believe that the variance can be granted with no substantial detriment to the public good or impairment to the zone plan and ordinance and that the benefits of this, of granting this variance would substantially outweigh any detriments for the sign. But I've heard, heard, obviously would like to hear comments from the board and their, their take on it, if, if that's all right, when the time comes. In addition, as part of Mr. Lavallo's review letter previously, he did ask that we go out and locate the heritage trees that were on the property. We did meet with him on site to review some of that and we had, then we had a tree expert go out there and identify them. I'm looking at page, sheet three B of 25, the tree removal and preservation plan. And we have identified four locations of trees that cut, I believe, met the, the township's requirements of what the heritage tree would be. We are saving the one tree at the red oak tree at the western corner. We have regraded this on the plan and cut back limit of disturbance to preserve that tree. The black walnut down in front of one of the buildings in the front. The report indicated that this tree is in very poor health and is a hazard and would most likely be, would, would fall down on its own in the near future. And we are, so we are proposing to remove that tree as it really has no worth. We have a red oak in the middle of the site, that's where, about where the clubhouse building is located. This one is being removed due to drape changes that we are proposing on the site. And obviously there's a, I believe a contribution that would be required for that, for the tree removal. And we have a, the red maple on the site as well. As put in the report, we don't believe it's a true heritage tree, the tree was cut down years ago and it's been kind of regrown in a haphazard kind of a way. Has some structural issues and we are removing that as well as it's in an area where we are cutting down the grade significantly. In addition, I'm going to go to the landscaping plan. Is sheet 11 of 25 of the set, we did provide some additional landscaping in the area that we are clearing between the new basin we're putting in, the larger basin, the main basin of the site and the rear of that, the daycare facility to kind of put the screen back in on our property to replant the buffer on the, the slopes that were, there were grading in that location. And those are the, the basic, the main, major revisions that were made to the plan. There were some minor tweaks, obviously, with the construction, sorry, with the comments that were addressed prior from the ERI's letter as part of the preliminary approval. We did also revise based on their letter prior to the, the previously scheduled June hearing, which led to the plans that we are submitted today. I'm going to go, I have a couple of comments or just a couple other items in, from their letter that I'd like to provide some testimony on. And as Mr., I think Mr. Sax had pointed out earlier in the evening, that the remainder of the comments that I do not touch on, we are proposing to agree with and comply with in the ERI review letter. And, and subject to any, to other comments received from the board or Mr. Darji. So. One of the comments, comment number nine in the, in the review letter talks about Spring Hill Road and the improvements. The improvement show from the county, what they're requiring, improvement shown along here, the, the new curving, a widening of the curving to provide a, a larger shoulder. New sidewalk along the area, the sidewalk actually been beefed up to a six inch sidewalk as, as per requirements concerns received from JCP and L as the sidewalks in there are easement, this would allow them to drive over the sidewalk if need be. As, as per our discussions with them. In addition, JCP and L, I will point out that they, we did have conversations and plans to them. They have reviewed this and the plan you have before you is, is incorporates all of their comments and changes that they requested. Pretty much removing almost all improvements from within their right of way easement for this, for this location. The county had, so what is shown on the plans is what the county has requested from us. We have not, we've resubmitted back to them as part of the conditional approval and are waiting for that final compliance letter. And there have been no other discussions about any more improvements along the frontage or any offsite improvements required as part of this application. Mr. Darji brings up in a couple aspects and three comments, the comments 12, 21 and 25 in his report regarding the access from Spring Hill Road into the site. Comment 12 talks about the, the RSIS classification of the roadway. As testimony provided during the preliminary approval, we believe that this is a, a drive aisle and not, and not, and should not be classified as a road, a road covered under RSIS's classifications. However, if the board and, and Mr. Darji continue or don't agree with that, that our, our analysis of this and our portrayal of the road, the category, I believe that it would fall under RSIS. If, if we needed, it would be a residential access, no parking, high intensity, which requires a 20-foot cartway with no curving and sidewalks on both sides. We, we have right now a 24-foot cartway, paved travel way, I should say, two curbs on both sides and sidewalk on one side. Therefore, if it is determined that this is, this would be classified as a road and, and under the guidance of RSIS regulations, we would request the numerous exceptions for the, the road itself to provide a larger cartway, curving of all sides and sidewalk on one. For that, we believe this is a, a safer access into the site than what would be regulated under that residential access, no parking, high intensity classification. In addition, the slope of the driveway coming in and the slope of the sidewalk that I had mentioned earlier along the north side of that drive aisle. The driveway is, is constructed, is posed at a 5% within the first 50 feet of the intercept of the right of way line as required by RSIS. And then we slope it up at 11 and a half percent into the site. That does meet RSIS requirements. We're allowed up to a maximum of 12%. We obviously didn't go to the maximum to leave a little room there in case for construction tolerances. And we have one sidewalk on the side of the road which follows along that 11 and a half percent until you get up towards the top where it potentially steepens up a little bit as you come around the curve. We did try to lower the intersection a little bit, but we are constrained a bit by the, the buildings and trying to maintain a, a consistent finished floor across the, the frontage of that building with, because we can't step the building and there's, with the setbacks providing, turning, turn backs to the sidewalks. And being this an age restricted facility, when, when I add stairs, doorways have to be accessible as well. We, then, for that reason, because the slope is, is exceeds, the ADA accessibility rides 5% for sloping sidewalk. If it goes up to eight, we'd need railings on both sides. We exceed both of those. That is why, that is the prime reason why we put the sidewalk out to Old Mill Road. And then this road, we would classify this, this access as not an ADA accessible route. I believe in, in a follow-up conversation I had with Mr. Darji recently, we were looking at other ways we maybe can soften this up a little bit, possibly even add some, you know, some steps in this location, then it would really truly take it out of the classification of, of an ADA accessible route. Going with the slopes in there, the retaining walls on site, as we, as we presented previously, there are substantial, numerous walls of substantial heights that is done to try and balance the earthwork on the property as we have a very high plateau on the, where the residential home is on the north side and slopes down quickly, 30 to 40 feet across the site down to Spring Hill Road. We're trying to balance the earthwork, so we are cutting on the north side and filling on the south side to get in. We would, as, as a condition of any, of the approval, as Mr. Darji points out in comment number 32, we would agree to provide the signed and sealed structural wall calculations to him prior to signing of the plans for his review to make sure that the, any of the reinforcing and requirements could be constructed prior to construction on the site. One of the major concerns that Mr. Darji had in his previous review letter was some additional soil testing on the site to be performed for the stormwater basins. We have done that and provide that information in the revised stormwater report that was submitted. And the basins onsite in the stormwater system was adjusted based upon that information, as I mentioned, complies with the stormwater regulations. Continues to provide with, with the revisions with the stormwater regulations. There are some additional information clarifications needed that we will provide Mr. Darji on some of the items, but they are mostly technical in minor in nature, in my opinion. The last items, item number, that, that was item 47 of Mr. Darji's report, just to point that out. And the last one is items 51 and 52 in his report regarding the downstream capacity and conveyance. I'm going to go shift to the, sorry, to sheet six of 25, the utility plan. The outfall from the stormwater system connects to the existing system located in Spring Hill Road, which discharges in a southerly direction between two of the residential homes. There were concerns by the homeowners raised during the new experience approvals that we went through for this about some flooding and, and high water tables or water in basements that we, we have maintained and, and understand. We want to be good neighbors. As I discussed with Mr. Darji, we would agree to meet with him on site to inspect the, the area through the, the residential homeowners. Obviously, we don't want to walk on their property without their permission and thought it best with Mr. Darji to, to help us facilitate that. And walk there and just take a look at the existing conditions out there to see if we see anything that is problematic. In addition, we would, we would agree as a condition of approval to TV that line, video, do a video inspection of the downstream line to the outfall pipe to the south and review that with Mr. Darji and if there are any repairs and upgrades that are necessary to make the system function in a more appropriate way to ensure that there are no impacts to these neighbors, we would agree to that as well. Finally, just item number 61 with agency approvals, this is one where we, we have a lot of, we have almost all the approvals obtained for the site. OBMUA, water and sewer preliminary and tentative approvals have been received. NJDOT, there is a permit required for the closing of the existing driveway to the residential home that we are in the process of obtaining right now. We have received certification from Freehold Soils. As I mentioned, the county conditional approval has received and we are waiting the final letter of compliance. And regarding the NJDEP, we have an LOI for the wetlands located on the eastern property line that's located behind the two apartment buildings. We also have a GP6 for the filling of that isolated wetland on that site. And we have also received our water main and the BWSE and our TWA sewer main extension permits from the DEP as well. And with that, as I mentioned, the rest of the comments in Mr. Darji's letter, we would agree to work with him and, and comply with as a condition of the approval.
So Sean, just to, just to confirm, we're just asking for the one variance, which is for the sign.
That is correct.
On Mr. Darji's letter, he had noted two variances, but number two has to do with screening the refuse enclosure and we are going to just provide that screening so we don't need the variance for it?
Correct. We will add some, we will add screen down here, was, it obviously left off the plan with the intent to not ask for a waiver for that, variance for that, correct.
Okay, so I, I don't have anything further for Mr. Delaney, but maybe the board or his professionals have questions.
Thank you, Mr. Goen and Mr. Delaney. I'm going to go to Mr. Darji.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our report is dated July 13th. Like Mr. Delaney and Mr. Goen said, you know, we do have a, a pretty long letter, so a 12-page letter, but most of the comments in there are pretty much of technical nature that can, that can probably be handled post, post approval, should the board act favorably in that application. As far as the, the compliance with RSIS, yeah, it's, it's our position that, that drive aisle and drive aisle one and drive aisle two would have to comply with RSIS requirements. I, I don't particularly have a, a problem with the, with the design of the route as far as the width and curbing and all that goes. Or type of, you know, drive aisle for a parking lot. I don't have a problem with that. And I think our fire marshal had, had comments regarding other issues. Had comments reading regarding other issues, not not necessarily the drive aisle, so. I don't have an objection to the board granting a. A de minimis exception from the RSIS for the drive aisle. The. Other items. Let me just go through here real quick, and like I said, as Mr. Delaney said, most of these items, we did meet, just so the board knows. We we did meet with the applicant and his professionals twice, actually, since the submission of this. Application for final approval, we met after the issuance of our first review letter. And we also met yesterday after the issuance of our, of our second review letter, and and the applicant has agreed to comply with with. All the comments of our of our letter. The one item which Mr. Delaney covered, which. I'd like to just reiterate is that we we would recommend. That the. Structural design calculations for all the retain walls be. A condition of approval that has to be satisfied prior to signature of final plans, I talked to Ms. Shafir about this as well. And and she's in. In agreement with us. Because this site relies heavily on, on, on retain walls and extensive retain walls. That are, you know, close to the property line, so we want to make sure that the walls can get constructed. Within the bounds of the property without the need for easements on adjoining properties and what have you, so. For that reason. We would request that be a made a condition of approval, and again, we did express that to the applicant, applicant, I don't, doesn't have an objection to that either. With that being said, I'm happy to go through any comments that that. You know, that are in my letter, but I'd rather not put the board to sleep since we are at nine o'clock. So I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have. If not, we can also, I know. Tim Kalu Kalani is here, he did the the planning review, he can cover the variances and and certainly all the landscaping and all that as well.
Okay. Mr. Dargy, you spoke about the condition of the retaining walls, just, could you just highlight that again, please?
Certainly. Certainly, so. So and I I I'll have to ask Sean to play Vanna, there's. There's quite a few retain walls on the site because there's, the the site falls. There's quite a bit of grade change from Old Mill Road to the Spring Hill, Spring Hill Road frontage. So in order to actually to create a level area where you can build these two. You know, fairly large buildings. You need to use some extensive retain walls, so right there, there's quite a few retain, you know, very large retain walls, but I think that one there might be twelve feet tall. And it's pretty close to the property line. And then on the other side of the site. We have a similar situation where, you know. We're filling that area and you have walls along the drive aisles in the drainage basin. Since, like I said, since those are pretty extensive and pretty important parts of the site, we want to make sure. That. Those walls, particularly the first one that we looked at. Are constructable without impacting the adjoining properties, and the only way to really do that is to get the final structural design. Done and the calculations done and submitted to the township before we sign off for the final plans, our final site plan. Because the, what we don't want to have is to have. That process being done when you've already broken ground and you've already got a disturbed site. And everyone's under, you know, pressure to get this, get this designed on and reviewed. So that, you know, the project can keep moving and you don't have, you can, and you know, don't have the impact to the joint property owners any longer than they have to be impacted, so. So for that reason, that that's what we're requesting as a.
Would it be your understanding that the applicant is willing to do that and is going to provide all that?
Yes, we met, we met with the applicant yesterday and went through. Point by point through the entire letter, actually, and and. On that point, which is in our letter, the applicant is in agreement.
So you're satisfied from your position that the that the applicant and his professionals are cooperating and they're going to comply with the. For the regulations with the exception, I believe. The, the drive aisles are going to need a design waiver, I guess?
Yes.
And and then we're going to, and Mr. Kalu Kalani is probably going to talk about the sign, right?
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
That'll need a variance. But everything else has been taken care of, right?
Yes, I'll, I'll, we went through all the comments, the applicant is in agreement with, with the comments. In our letter, so we can, we can come to. An agreement on all those and they can comply, and most importantly, the thing that I use as the. As the, as the deciding factor is. In in complying with our comments, I don't believe that there will be any substantive changes to the plan that you're seeing in front of you right now.
Okay, before I go to the board for any other questions of either, why don't I get Mr. Kay in right now, let him talk about that sign because that may come up as a question. From some of the other board members or anything else he wants to talk about, then I'll go back to my board members, Mr. Kay.
Sean, you said that the signs go, many pretty much we have out at the other site. The old bridge site.
Yes, it was the, the sign that that's on the plan is the same size dimensions that was presented as part of the Oak Tree Plaza during that approval.
Could you just describe, you know, for some, maybe the board members that haven't seen that, the materials, the colors. The font. Just so they have an idea what it's going to look like.
Certainly, give me one second. Would you have a detail? On sheet fifteen of twenty-five, the construction details site. In the lower right corner of that, the plan, obviously. It's an externally illuminated side, you know, brick base of some sort with a mantle on top of it. And, you know. Lettering on, on, on a background for it, the colors have not been decided as of yet, but they will. The intent is to match them and be consistent with. The building architecture, so it kind of blends in with that, and also we would take into account the retaining walls. The color and styles is there, so all of it would blend together and look. Consistent with one another and and blend and be an even match. Four feet high off the top of the ledge, ten feet wide for a total height of six feet with that two-foot base, as I mentioned.
I will make sure we'll put the correct name of the project on it, Sean, when we install it.
Yes.
That would be helpful.
And so it's your opinion that the size is necessary so people will be able to, so it'll be visible since it's set back a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, we have proper site distances on the, on the road, as testified by Mr. Kendall at the preliminary hearing. But, you know, coming up the hill, you'll be see it, and, you know, coming down the hill, I think we have to do some, it might be some. A couple clearing or so might be necessary to do it, and if the tree line, the limits of the tree line drip line is shown on the plans. There would be a small tree or something like that may have to be cut back a little bit just to visit from the heading, I guess. South or eastbound on, on Spring Hill Road, but we believe that the size is appropriate for the visibility and then access to the property.
Alright, so I, so I think you've met the positive criteria, and I really don't see any negative criteria as long as it's. Done well and they get the right name on there, things like. Getting back to the retaining walls. You have like a picture, right, some of the, so the board knows, some of the walls are pretty high, they're along the parking area, it's going to be twenty-four foot high, so they're going to be kind of prominent. So I asked Sean to to get some photographs of what it might look like and. Bow of the block and so it's, you know, so the board has not given what it's going to look like.
Yeah, so, so Mr. Sacks, this, this, before I show it, this is not something that was submitted to the board, this is a in response to the comment from Mr. Dargy's letter that was received. On July thirteenth. So was not be able to say it is a truly an exhibit, so we'd have to mark it.
Yeah, let's, let's mark it for this evening's purposes, and I have a copy of this as well.
Okay, I just want to make sure before I presented it that you're okay with it, so.
So, so we'll, we'll mark this A1, Mr. Sacks, is that okay, and Sean, can you just describe what it is?
Sure, these are. Photos first from some retaining walls for some other residential developments. Not in Old Bridge, the applicant took these. The other day after our meeting with Mr. Dargy, and it's an example of the. The style and the color of wall that would be. That is being looked at for the, for the project, it's that earthy tone. Kind of a split, you know, split face block kind of a frontage with texture. Going in, this obviously has some landscaping in front of it, we will have some walls, we'll have some landscaping in front of it as well. This is on page one, this was dated July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The second one is a little lighter without the landscaping in front, similar. Similar idea, you know, these are some typical sized blocks, eight inch high, twelve inch wide. Split face, they're set back as required. For the manufacturer. And they stepped up and down with the, with capstone on top, so these are what the applicant is looking and envisioning. At this point, you know, with the color palette and the, and the style of, of wall, once again, this is. From a residential development that he is familiar with. I believe up in Aberdeen, that was, that was recently constructed.
And just for the board's application, we, we made some comments basically to have some more landscaping installed along the front of that. The wall by the basin and and Mr. Delaney's amendment will do that, so I think we can make it look pretty good.
Anything else, Mr. Kay?
No, not right now.
Okay, I'm gonna go to my board members, and I'm going to ask at this point if you have any questions for Mr. Kalu Kalana, Mr. Dargy or Mr. Delaney. And I can't see the screen, so you're going to have to speak up, I, I, the map is, and I'm sorry, the. That sheet is in my way right now.
Mr. Skodna, question?
Go ahead, Mr. Skodna.
Now, Mr. Delaney, I believe when this was first brought to us, you indicated townhouses. Now you're indicating apartments here on the map.
This was, this has gone through as part of the, Mr. Goen could back to talk about this too as well, we bifurcated this application, we had several. Versions of. Buildings on the play, one had apartment building with some garages at one point, that was something that was presented. Ultimately, we actually had three buildings on the site in seventy-five units when we started this.
I remember, what are, what are they, townhouses or apartments?
These are, these are apartments, they are two-story. Rent, age-restricted rental apartments.
So I thought.
This is what was approved.
The last time you indicated one could purchase a townhouse and then rent it. That's fine, that's, that's up to the individual, but now these are completely apartments.
I, I don't recall mentioning that these were for sale at any point. In any of the testimony that I've done in the preliminary or the use variance. It may have been, may, maybe at one of the. Really early on meetings, but the approval was always for the use variance approval and the preliminary approval, we're all, I believe, we're always for. The, the fifty-eight rental apartments for age restricted.
That's correct.
Yeah, but on my agenda, I see townhouses. Number two.
I, okay, I see your, I see your talk, I see what you're saying. Yeah, these, these were not. At one point, I think we had some garages, so they kind of looked like a townhouse feel, and maybe the nomenclature just didn't get updated, but we represented these were apartments.
I really don't think the area can handle apartments of. Of this size, fifty-six apartments, and now coming off of Route thirty-four, how is the entrance going into the fountains at Old Bridge, where do you go in?
We enter off of Spring Hill Road.
Spring Hill Road, which is two lanes.
Correct. We are widening across our frontage, provide a full width shoulder.
Coming down from Route, Route thirty-four, you have that sharp turn into Old Mill Road, and then you go into Spring Hill Road.
Yeah, we, there's no access, there's only an emergency access off of, of Old Mill for firefighting, and that was coordinated with Mr. Garrity.
And that sign, you got the, the sign six feet high. Coming up the hill. Sitting in your car, you're now three feet off the ground. That sign is going to be an obstruction to any passenger going out that way.
It's not. I, I will, I will say in response to that, we have added, we do show site triangle and site distance lines as required. To the preliminary approval, and the sign is located outside of those site distance lines where a car would stop. So we believe the sign is placed properly, it will not block any, any site, any site distance.
That's pretty dangerous, I, I traveled that road, and when you have to get off of thirty-four onto Old Mill, you've got to be sharp to get down that, that, that turn. So you might want to consider that. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else with questions?
Andrew.
Go ahead.
But it's age restricted, what is that, fifty-five and over?
Yes.
Yes.
You have no, no elevators?
There are two stories, if it's, I do not believe it's required by code. If it is, they'll be in there, but I don't, I don't believe. Don't believe, I don't, I don't think we have elevators.
No, they're only, they're only two-story buildings.
Yes, but for an age-restricted sixty-five-year-old carrying groceries up. Even with the cart with stairs is a bit of a problem. And and getting furniture or getting anything in, I realize it's not assisted living, but there does come a time when someone will be using walkers. And canes, and that's pretty dangerous on stairways.
If you don't mind.
Everyone, everyone living in an over fifty-five is not fifty-five.
If you don't, if you don't mind, if I can jump to the.
Hold on, hold on, let me, let me correct what I just said, there, there are elevators, so.
Oh, there, okay, thank you.
So that solves that problem, yeah, there's one elevator in each building.
Okay, and there's no garage, no, no garages?
Correct, no garages.
And it's absolutely, the roads are easy for snow removal to come in, so it does not be private.
Well, if that's a private property, the town wouldn't handle that.
Are you sure?
Yes, I'm sure.
Yeah, that, that would be, there would be a, there would be a property management company that handles the, the grounds and snow removal and trash removal and all that, that kind of thing, it would be a private company.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Sanders?
No, as long as there are elevators, I live in an over fifty-five complex. And from this, I can speak from experience, everyone is not fifty-five.
Very true.
Yep, understood, well, that was my mistake.
Any other questions from board members? Mr. Sacks, any from you?
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions.
Okay. I have none either. You have any further witnesses tonight, Mr. Goen?
I do not. Not, so I guess we go to the public, correct?
Yep, I'm going to right now. This is nine dash twenty twenty-one Z, towns at Old Bridge LL Street, located three Old Mill Road and ninety Spring Hill Road. If you want to be heard on this matter, there's a list of phone numbers in front of you on your screen, please call one of them. We will take your call as come, as it comes in queue. And try to help you out with questions or comments. Please call in now. Is anyone in queue presently? Just so.
No raised hands.
Okay. Anything?
There are no raised hands.
Mr. Sacks?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we can close the public portion.
Thank you very much. Just to clarify a couple of things for more professionals. You mentioned you're okay with the sign as. As it is, the, the C variance for that because it's over the, over the. Square footage. And the screening on the enclosures and the trash enclosures are, that's going to be complied with, so that we know you for bans. And we need a design waiver on the. Drive aisles coming in, I believe, the cartways there.
It's actually a de minimis exception from RSIS.
That's correct.
Okay, and then. I think that's it, that's all I know. Mr. Sacks, did I miss anything?
I think you have everything, Mr. Chairman.
So what we, we would actually first vote on the C variances and then find our final.
Yes.
So we have just the sign and. The way, would you call it a waiver?
Well, you know what, let's, for purposes of the vote, let's call it a waiver, the RSIS requires the driveway width to be a certain, a certain distance. However, there can be a. Request for a de minimis waiver of that. Actually, the procedure is, I think Mr. Goen is going to have to contact the Department of Community Affairs in Trenton. To see if they'll grant it. And if they grant it, then we're fine.
Well, well, I, I think actually, Mr. Sacks, the, the board can grant it, but we have to notify the DCA.
That's what I mean, you have, you have to get their approval as well, exactly.
The process actually for a de minimis, de minimis waiver is that the board grants the waiver, and then the board's. Professionals actually have to write up the reasoning for the board granting that de minimis waiver and submit it to the DCA.
Right, right.
All right, thank you. Mr. Goen, you want me to go with the vote here, or you have any final comments?
No, vote please.
Okay. Board members, first vote would be for the size of the sign, which is. Over, over the. Variance limit, I mean, over the size limit, so it will be a C variance for the sign, someone want to move that?
I'll move it, Dewhurst.
Okay, I'll second it, roll call, please.
Mr. Dewhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Keldoff?
Yes.
Mr. Skodna?
I believe it would be an obstruction in public safety, I vote no.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Sakowski?
Yes.
Karen Solven?
Yes. Then it would be, if I'm saying it correctly, a design waiver for the. Yes. Then it would be, if I'm saying it correctly, a design waiver for the cartway.
Yes.
Okay.
Cartway width, yes.
Okay, if someone want to move that.
I'll move it, Kelduff.
Okay. Second, Connor. Move the second roll call, please.
Mr. Do Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Kelduff?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Psychowski?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. And final major site plan, correct, Mr. Sack?
Yes.
Someone want to move that?
I'll move it. Stoner.
Stoner moves it. Is there a second?
I'll second, Kelduff.
Kelduff seconds. Roll call, please.
Mr. Do Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Kelduff?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
No.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Psychowski?
No.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, application is approved.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Go.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney as well, and I thank our professionals.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thanks a lot.
Is Debbie handling the next matter, or who's handling it?
There's a Rosenberg Associates over there.
Okay, are you ready, man?
I thought it's. Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody need a break, or we're just gonna move right forward, okay? Unless there's a compelling reason we can't. Okay, we're gonna move right forward. I'm gonna call this matter. This is 12 dash 2021 Z. This is Edward Testino LLC. It's the OG one zone, block 4187 lot 3.11, located 121 Route 34. This is for multi-use building, first floor of office space, second floor of residential space, three one-bedroom, one-two bedroom, requiring D variance. Mr. Testino is representing his LLC. Sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank you and the rest of the board members for taking the time to hear this application and for your service. As you said, I am the applicant. Basically, it's Edward Testino LLC, my wholly-owned legal corporation. And JR JT LLC is my wholly-owned property holding company. As you know, the site is at 124 Route 34. Lot 3.11, block 4187. It's a 1.84 acre site. Because it's on 34 and prominently situated, I'm sure most of the board members are familiar with its location and its current features. From facing the building to the left is the first aid and to the right is the fire station. Across the streets are some residents and the property goes all the way back to border on some homes in Central Park. There's a conservation easement and many trees back there. If you haven't known it, I've been practicing over 37 years, but I've been in this particular location for just about 34 years, and it served as my law office for that entire time. I've been serving the community and my client base here in Old Bridge from this building. And many of know it's a very unique and because of its unique site and its position and longevity that I have here. I developed a lot of goodwill with this site. I've had thousands of clients over the years at my doorstep, and, and the property is special and unique to me. I have professionals here tonight who will describe the unique character of the property and the substantial reasons and benefits for the proposal. To me, it is, it's a way to improve my law home for me and my clients into the future. We began this quest with a planning board application 48-18P, and I sought a new building there for my practice and upgrade, expansion, beautification. And I had actually filed a copy of approving resolution. I'm sure you've seen it. And we were almost at the end, then COVID-19 had hit, changing everything, changing the landscape of financing, the landscape of office space. In fact, the office space market had fell out and leases were lost, downsized, and most people working from home are zooming like we are tonight. Anyway, I actually filed a New York Times article with this application, just, I'm sure you've heard it before, but just so you know what the history of the site is. And for 34 years, as I said, the site has been my location. And as a lifelong resident of Old Bridge, I'm familiar with the property because when I was in high school, one of my friends used to live here and his family used it as a home. And the site is certainly a unique location, given its size and its proximity to the other municipal uses. But I seek to continue it for my law practice. In fact, the site, this building that I'm sitting in was built in the late 50s, early 60s, and when I did a Oprah request of the township, there was no building records. But you can see by looking at the building that it is a residential home initially built that was converted. Way back when, when it first was built, there was also a farm that was used on this property. But more recently, the site was converted to commercial by Russ Weber, who sought to build condominiums here, and then he eventually converted so that he could subdivide it. Half the lot that I'm on was sold to me. The other half was sold to the firehouse, and they've done a little bit of development, as you may know, since they acquired that. The proposal is to develop a two-story building of 9,806 square feet. It's a mixed-use building proposal, essentially the same size and shape as the previous building approval that I had on, under the planning board. But now seek the building to consist of two floors. The first floor, 4,009 and three square feet of professional space, non-medical use. And the second floor, four residential units, also consisting of 4,903 square feet, consisting of three one-bedroom apartments and one two-bedroom apartment. In fact, I believe this new proposal and the testimony that I present tonight through my experts will show that this new proposal is less intense. And certainly, the reports we have filed and our planners will present that information and, and show you exactly what we intend to do on the site. As the proposed building as described by the professionals tonight would bring and give me the ability to bring about a new, improved, ratable, upgrade the site and a, and a new home for my practice. It will be, in my opinion, visibly appealing, visibly appealing as you enter the Route 34 corridor. Here in Old Bridge, the, the building would improve the corridor and the visual aesthetics of the corridor. And I believe that's what's sought by the zoning plan. Tonight, we will have before the board a bifurcated application, and we seek to have the use variance granted tonight for special reasons, use variance. And for that reason, you should note that the, the engineering has not been fully done, that we intend to do that on the second half of the application. However, our engineer is here and he has worked through the site, and I believe he can answer most of your questions. It's our hope and intention that we will be able to continue to work with you and the town's professionals and developing that engineering once we get through tonight. As you know, the zoning here on the site is an OG one zone, general office zone, under the township zoning ordinance. The principal office use is permitted. However, the residential use is, is not listed as permitted in the OG one. It's simply omitted from the OG one. It's not even referred to. We would describe the sounding, the surrounding areas tonight in testimony and demonstrate that the special reasons and the lack of negative impact on the ordinance and the community does not, and that it also doesn't impact the zoning ordinance. Tonight, I have assembled for you a fine group of experts who will provide the testimony and answer your questions. I have our engineer expert, Ernest Feist. He also has various planning license and has provided the traffic study. I also have Michael Testa, who is the architect, and he has provided the building plans and the rendering. And also I have before you Justin Osceolo, who is a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey. And we hope and intend to demonstrate that the site is particularly suited for the proposed use, that the site can accommodate the use, the site development plan presents and provides buffers, and the proposal provides a pleasing aesthetic and compliant with most other requirements of the township. And that all light, air, and space requirements will be met. So with that, Mr. Chairman, and with your permission, I would like to move to my witnesses, unless there's any questions from you or the attorney.
Mr. Testino, you can bring for the first, first witness, Mr. Sacks, swear, man.
Yes, I would call Mr. Ernest Feist to the floor and have him sworn.
Mr. Feist, please raise your right hand. Thank you. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
All right, please state your name, spelling your last name, professional affiliation for the record.
It's Ernest Feist, F.E.I.S.T. I'm a licensed professional engineer, licensed professional planner, certified municipal engineer, and a certified public works manager.
Thank you.
Just for the record, Mr. Sacks, I did file with the clerk a copy of his curriculum vitae and his licenses are listed therein, and I provided you with a copy of the same for your.
Yes.
Made in New Jersey, Mr. Sack.
And I'm very familiar with Mr. Feist. We've known each other a long time, so.
What's that, his credentials?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Feist, did you prepare a use variance sketch for the proposed application?
I did. Yes, I have.
And in addition, you also prepared a traffic report. Is that right? You filed it?
Correct.
So let's go to the use variance application. Would you describe the site plan for the board?
Yes, I'd be happy to. This site is known as 121 Route 34, lot 3.11 and block 4187. As Mr. Testino indicated, it is in the office general zone. It consists of 1.84 acres. The approximate dimensions are 125 feet in width and 650 feet in depth. It's a narrow, long lot. The site is currently improved with Mr. Testino's law office, as he's indicated. And there's also a rather large conservation easement, which encompasses approximately two-thirds of the rear of the property. The site is on the north side of Route 34. It's located between Rachel Court, Old Mill Road. To the west is the Cheesequake Fire Department and Elementary School. To the east is the Cheesequake First Aid Squad and several single-family homes. To the north is a single-family residential subdivision. To the south, across Route 34, is a mix of business and single-family homes. As Mr. Testino indicated, back in August of 2019, this site was the, was a subject of an application to the planning board and received preliminary and final site plan approval for a 9,000-square-foot office building. What's being proposed this evening is a two-story mixed use. The first floor is proposed as two office suites totaling 4,903 square feet. And the second floor is proposed as four residential apartments. The site is accessed from Route 34 by a single driveway. Coming into the site, there is a parking field in the front of the building, proposed building, with 16 parking spaces, two of which will be handicap. The building itself, and then to the rear of the building are additional 17 parking spaces. Further to the rear is this proposed storm water management basin, and that basin will discharge through underground piping back out to the existing storm water management system in Route 34. With regards to traffic, during the preliminary and final site plan approval before the planning board, McDonough and Ray had prepared a traffic study. I updated the traffic study by taking a look at the difference between trip generation for that proposed use and trip generation for the use that's being proposed now. And peak hour trip, trip generation for the prior approval was 14 in the AM, 14 trips and 14 in the PM. The new proposed structure and uses will reduce that to 9 AM trips and 10 PM. As Mr. Testino indicated, this is, it is a bifurcated application, and this is only a use variance sketch. There's no final engineering at this time. I've reviewed the ERI letter from Mr. Darji and Mr. Prosska. Take no exception to their recommendations and the comments they've made. And if we're successful this evening in the use variance application, a full site plan would then be proposed at a later date. And the comments and recommendations of your staff would be incorporated into that site plan.
Mr. Feist, I know that you took a look at the grades and, and believe that you know what you can do with the water on this site. What have you preliminarily determined with regard to how the water would flow on this site?
Yes, so storm water management would flow to the proposed storm water basin at the rear of the rear parking lot adjacent to the conservation easement. And the grade is such that I believe we would discharge from that basin back out to the storm water management system located in Route 34.
Yes, and there's a drain right next to the first aid building that you already.
That's correct. That is correct.
Now, the July 8, 2021 letter of Mr. Darji, you were with that. I've already stayed. It's kind of been mad.
Yes, so, so the review letter, again, this is not a site plan application. And Mr. Darji indicates that in his review letter, but he has made some recommendations and made some comments with regards to the use variance sketch that we presented. And I believe, again, at the time of a site plan application, that we can satisfy the comments made in that review letter.
And do you believe that there's ample parking for the site?
Yes, the sketch that we prepared, given the square footage of the building, we are in conformance with the ordinance. We exceed the required parking.
And as I already said in my opening, we're not anticipating any medical uses, so that was taken into your calculations. Is that right?
That's correct. We use the standard for general office space.
And the traffic flow on the site has been depicted. You talked about the, the proposed garbage bin on the site and what is anticipated there?
We anticipate that there will be a curbside pickup on Route 34 like there is today, so the storage facility in the back shows two rows of eight-wheeled dumpsters, which would be moved from that dumpster area to the side of the road on Route 34.
Hey, well, I thank you for your testimony. I will ask the chairman if there are any questions of yours. Should we hold them until we've got the last bit of testimony?
There we go. Give me there?
Yeah, I, for a minute there, I couldn't get the, to go off. Mr. Testino, I'm gonna allow the professionals first to make any inquiries, and then I'll go back to the board members, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Feist.
Mr. Dorji, do you have comments for this witness?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually don't have any questions for Mr. Feist. I mean, he's correct in that. You know, when it comes to use variances, and we've been down this road before, you know, with the board where you have a bifurcated application. So when it comes to use variances, from an engineering perspective, what we're really focusing on is environmental and traffic and impacts to adjoining properties, really in comparison to what the approved uses are. So from an engineering perspective, Mr. Feist covered pretty much everything. A lot of the comments in our letter are comments that they should keep in mind and consider and incorporate at the time of site plan approval. From a traffic standpoint, Mr. Proskas, I believe, is on the line here. He works with our office to do the traffic reviews, and certainly he can answer any questions that the board may have. But in general, the board is looking at what traffic is generated from this site versus what the allowable uses are, or even this. What the approved use, approved site plan was from, that the board approved back in, the plan we approved back in 2019. And the information submitted by the applicant indicates, and we concur, that there's actually a decrease in traffic generated based off of this proposed use versus what was approved by the board.
Thank you. Ms. Swan, are you in on this at all?
Yes, I am.
She's the main piece of this whole thing.
Do you have any questions to the engineer?
I just have one question, and maybe I missed it. But the office space used on the ground floor, is it just for Mr. Testino's office? Or there will be another tenant who will share the space as well, the first floor?
I can answer that, Mr. Chair, if you will allow me.
Sure.
At this time, it's anticipated that I would occupy at least half of the myself, because I have that much space right now that I occupy. Pre-pandemic, I was thinking I was expanding my practice, and I would have needed the whole first floor myself. But since then, we've lost employees, unfortunately. And at this juncture, I'm only anticipating half the use for myself, with anticipation and five years of growth that I would expand into the other side. But when it's first built, in order to obtain the financing, I would obtain at least for the other half of the property on the first floor.
And the other half would be office use as well?
Yes, office use, general office use, non-medical. I would hope that it would be either something compatible with my business, like a title company, or something that, you know, we can enhance our own business by.
Thank you. That's all for this witness.
Thank you. Mr. Proskas, is, did I hear?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. I think Mr. Dorji covered it. You know, our letter had a number of suggestions in terms of traffic in the site plan.
Okay.
That the applicants' engineers said they would consider as they move forward.
Okay, thank you.
You know, we asked them to take a look at that as they progress.
Do we have any comments from the fire marshal?
I believe there was a report submitted.
It was found satisfactory, I believe, at this juncture.
That's my understanding.
Okay. I'll go to my board. Questions for the witness?
Questions, Godwell.
Go ahead.
Mr. Santiago, you said 37 years you've been practicing there?
I've been practicing 37 years. Here, it's about 34 years.
Have you ever stayed overnight?
Here?
Yeah.
I fell asleep at my desk a few times, but no, there's no bed in here. In fact, I get inspected by the fire company next door, and that's one thing they don't allow. So, yeah, there's no bed in here, although I have to be honest with you, I have fallen asleep at my desk.
Being so close to the firehouse and the first aid, the nuisance from the alarm, and also from the sirens from the ambulance, should cause concern for residents that are going to rent your apartments.
Well.
I did speak to some resident there, and it's like living next to a school with the school bells constantly going off. One does get, one does get used to it, but, you know, 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, I don't think that's appropriate. Again, I travel there, and coming north, it's a quick turn into your establishment. But coming south, you have to wait for the traffic to allow you to make that left turn in. It's only a two lane. There's a traffic light at one end, a traffic light at the other end. And then it bottles up, and so you have to wait for a nice courtesy person to let you make that left.
I've been traveling this road for years. I know exactly what the turnings are here. But I leave that to the engineers and the state DOT. But other than that, I know there's a fire whistle up by the school. Many of the residents up there have complained about it, you know, by the high school there. They've complained about, including one of the board members on the high school. Unfortunately, it is, it could be deemed a nuisance by some people, but it's a need, and it's a public function, and I don't think that's ever going to change. There are residents across the street already. There are residents down the hill in Central Park. They all have to put up with it.
Yeah.
Right over here, too.
He was lucky, I guess.
Yeah, I'm just saying, the same thing happens when you turn onto Rachel Court coming off of 34. So, you know, you can make an easy turn in there. Any one of the businesses going up 34 have the same problem, including Pine Tavern, the doctor's office there, the spinal center that was just put up across the street, the spinal center's office across the street, or the chiropractor's office across the street.
And if you, if you happen to rent to parents with children, how is the school bus going to get into your establishment?
Well, the units aren't sized for children. The only reason I'm asking for two, in case I decide to be a snowbird one day, I can have a unit here myself. But, yeah, we're not anticipating renting to children. But there is a two-bedroom unit, because my understanding and talking to various builders is that a lot of, I would be intending to rent to singles or married couples, but a lot of people like to have that second room, especially in this state, so they can zoom. So that was a marketing decision, so I take your comments as well deserved. But I don't think it's going to be an issue here.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything for Mr. Feist? Mr. Skodna?
Oh, Mr. Feist, that was just about the traffic regarding coming south. I had to wait a number of cars to let me in, to go in. And once I got in the establishment, the fire alarm went off. So I watched that go off a number of times. Okay, thank you.
All right. Ms. Andrews, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Testino. Do you know how many other areas similar to yours that have apartments on top of them? In other words, in strictly a, what I would call a commercial area? And how many of them have built apartments above their offices or their retail stores?
Well, there's one on 516 that I'm well aware of. That seems to be struggling with the commercial, but the site was able to be developed because of the residential component. But then again, they built it just before COVID. And one thing I could tell you, I'm glad that I didn't have a shovel in the ground before COVID, because I'd have been ruined. But the end of the day is, that's the one I can point out to you right away.
Yeah, that's the one I'm very well aware of, because I'm very well aware of the bottom. There are quite a few empty places there. And I was just wondering how many other areas are doing what you're doing, having these apartments above smaller, I can't call them strip malls, because they're really not, but individuals of small apartments.
This is not a strip mall for sure, and
Oh, I know.
This is going to be owner-occupied, so that's a big difference. And I'm not anticipating any stores. I'm just looking for office. I, my, my practice is, my practice, and it's paramount to me. So whoever moves into this building with me for the, you know, and I anticipate my life as an attorney may have another 20, 25 years, because an attorney's retirement plan is work till you die, but.
I know. My father was an attorney. I know.
So you know, and at the end of the day is, I don't want anybody here that's going to cause me problems and doesn't fit.
Okay, I was just interested to know how many others. I do know of that one, but I know of no other.
I agree with you. I don't know of any others.
Yeah, neither do I. Thank you.
Anybody else on the board? Mr. Salkowski, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. I guess it's similar to Ms. Andrews, because I'm looking at the rendering that we've been provided with. And it certainly looks like a beautiful office building, but looking at the general surrounding area, there doesn't really seem to be anything that sort of fits this style. I mean, it's certainly unique, and I am familiar with the property that you'd mentioned on Route 516. But looking at that property, it clearly looks like businesses with apartments on top. Looking at this, it looks like an office building. So I guess, you know, my concern is that it appears to be office space with apartments. It doesn't look like there's apartments in it, so I'm not really sure if it fits the overall setting of the area.
Well, we can address that when the architect comes up as well as the planner. But the thing was, you know, we have municipal uses on both sides. So we're trying to make it fit, and we'll certainly welcome any comments that the planner has or any of the town professionals that would lend to making it more aesthetically pleasing. But maybe you'll let me have the other professionals present, and then they can answer your question.
Okay, Mr. Salkowski. Good. You want to move on with your next witness, Mr. Testino?
I would call Architect Michael Testa to stand. Mike?
I'm here.
Okay. Mr. Testa, please raise your right hand. Okay, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
All right, please state your name, spelling your last name, professional affiliation for the record.
My first name is Michael. Last name is Testa, T.E.S.T.A. Registered architect and been standing in the state of New Jersey since 1996. Graduated School of Architecture from NGIT, 1991. Owner and principal architect for Michael V. Testa Architect, located in Manalapan, New Jersey since 2002.
Yes, I know that Mr. Testa has been before your board before, so you'll, thank you for qualifying him. Mr. Testa, did you have occasion to prepare a proposed mixed-use building plan for me?
Yes, I did.
Can you describe it to the board?
Yes, may I have permission to share the screen? I'll share from my end.
That's up to Ms. Swan. Ms. Swan, should he share, or you're going to share it?
I think I have the exhibits. I'm going to put them up.
Okay.
Do you want to start here, Michael?
I'd like to start with the plans first.
Yes, I'm actually opening them.
Okay.
Mike, just bear with me. I don't have, I don't have the architectural plans in this in this bunch, but give me a second. Maybe it's there on the township's website. Yes. Yes, here we are.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, Chairman, members of boards, good evening. My name again is Michael Testa. I'm the architect for the applicant, Mr. Edward Testino. And we have before you here are floor plans and elevations that our office has prepared for the new building. As indicated in the drawings, this is a two-story mixed-use building with a partial basement. The plan you have up in front of you is the proposed basement plan. As you can see, the basement is only accessible on one side of the building. In the center of the plan, there's an elevator equipment room. And to the right side is just a small crawl space that is inaccessible by any occupant. It's just there for ease of running plumbing, computer cabling, and so forth. There is a elevator pick that's a rectangular shape at the top of that plan. The elevator does not go down to the basement. This is only accessible through the one tenant space, which would be Mr. Testino's space. This basement area is, the basement area is 2,800, 2,084 square feet. It'll also house utilities, HVAC equipment for the office space, and the residential units on the second floor. Can we scroll down a little bit, Ms. Swan? The plan you have before you here is the proposed first-floor plan. At the bottom of the plan is Route 34. That would be the main entrance, the double doors, which is covered by a small canopy. You enter into a common vestibule. You either go left into Mr. Testino's area or right into the potentially, potential second office tenant. As you can see, we have a common demising wall running straight through the middle of the space towards the rear. And at the rear of the floor plan, you could see an entrance area and an exit area from the office spaces. The entrance area is to the rear with a covered entrance as well. That entrance will be used solely for the residents. There's a set of stairs, fire-rated stair to take you upstairs. That will also take you downstairs. And as you can see at the back of the left side tenant, there's a door into that stairwell for Mr. Testino to get downstairs to access the basement. Mr. Testino's requirement for our design for the basement is what he uses right now. The basement of his existing building is filled with all of his files. And it's actually to a point where he's got to remove the files on a regular basis. He wanted a basement large enough that he can store his files and not have to move them off-site. That's why the access is directly from the rear of his space as a ease of transit, going up and down and getting these files. The rear entrance also is a lobby and a utility area for sprinkler room, sprinkler riser, and other water, gas, electric, so forth. We have an elevator associated with this lobby that will take you upstairs. So it'll only travel two floors, the main floor, which really only serves the residential entrance, and the second floor, which serves the residential apartments. Each one of these tenant spaces, Mr. Testino's tenant space, is 2,170 square feet. And a tenant space to the right is 2,017 square. Ms. Swan, can you scroll up to the second floor, please? Great, thank you very much. Just a little bit more. Great. In the center of the top of the plan, you can see that lobby that you saw down below on the first floor. So the set of stairs will bring you up to this lobby, or it'll take you down from this floor. We have the elevator discharging into the common lot area, as well as another storage and utility closet in the common area. You come down a central spine. It's double-loaded, apartments on each side. On the left side, you have two one-bedroom apartments that are approximately 1,000 to 1,100 square feet. And on the right-hand side, you have a two-bedroom unit in the front right corner and a one-bedroom unit. And on the right-hand side, you have a two-bedroom unit in the front right corner and a one-bedroom unit in the rear. Now, the units are, are large-sized units. They're nice, comfortable spaces, upscale. Apartments, Mr. Testino's request, we fully handicap kitchens, bathrooms throughout the entire space. Each space has its own hot water heater furnace located. They also have their own washer, dryers. Kitchens will have dishwashers, upscale appliances and large, large egress windows throughout the entire second floor for a lot of natural light and air. So if we can go to the rendering that Ms. Swan. Great. Thank you very much. The, the exterior of the building is kind of derivative to Mr. Testino's previous application and, and desired look from the street. It does have a commercial appearance. Mr. Sikowski's comments were, were very accurate. The front is facing Route 34. We tried to maintain that, that appearance on the street. Soften it with lighter colors that are being, being used more and more on residential buildings that we're designing. It has a cultured stone base around all four sides with accents on the tower elements. The building has two different tones of gray. As you can see, large windows, again, as discussed earlier. That's the upper image is the front facade facing Route 34. The rear facade is on the bottom facing the residential parking lot. So again, you can see the entrance into that area. Use, you know, just various architectural treatments such as cornices. We've concealed the parapet in case any rooftop equipment does go on the roof. We don't foresee that at this point based upon the ability to have a basement and the self-contained package units for the residential spaces. We, again, trying to, in keeping with some of the other buildings on the street in this area. I also designed the chiropractor's office across the street. It was very well received at the time as far as the parapet stepping, the various material colors and soft appearance. And this is, was our goal, but we appreciate any input from the board if so desired for upgrades or changes or, you know, just enhancements. And that would conclude my testimony at this point for the exhibits.
Oh, Mike, just to let the board know, how is this building relative to the other buildings that are in line on 34?
Uh, how is it? It's going to be, it's definitely, I would have to say better, but like I said, I did the building across the street a couple of years back, maybe in 2015. Again, very similar to that building. This is going to be a fully fire-rated building between tenants and between the first and second floor. We're going to have a full fire suppression system throughout the building and it is completely handicap accessible. So it's tough, definitely an enhancement to the buildings located in that area as far as the quality of life of the occupants in the building.
And essentially, just so the board knows, the building's going in similar footprint, you know, where the building is now.
It started off exactly that. The front, the front of the building facing Route 34 and the corners are essentially the footprint of the old building. At one time, we were trying to keep the old building and we're going to build around it. It just got to a point where it'd be more expensive to do that and to just take the building down, building, a better building, a more code-compliant building and a safer building.
And as far as the, the look of the building, you've taken my request to, to keep it professional looking. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any questions for the architect or his plans or anything about the rendering at this point, Mr. Chair?
Let's see if any of the professionals do, but when I looked at your rendering, it looked identical to the spine and wellness center across the street. That's what the first thing I thought before you even mentioned it. It's interesting that he did the same architecture. Ms. Swan, any questions to the architect?
Uh, I just have one question. Did I see like a bike storage area at the ground floor? Was that a bike storage area?
No, on the ground floor, we had the back of the building, a sprinkler riser and utility room.
Uh, just one second.
It just. Yes, you see that square above the elevator?
Okay.
But I'm sure Mr. Feis could put, you know, bike racks at the back of the building where they could, people could have bicycles.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to have that.
Well, the units are very large, so they, plus you have the elevator. So he's to bring the bicycle into the elevator up and store the bicycles in the apartment, which they do typically in, in most city apartments.
I mean, I have seen, since we're talking about the city, I mean, I've seen a specific bike storage area on the first floor as well. So maybe something to consider. I was, I was saving all my comments for architectural plans for when we come in with, when you come in for a site plan approval, should the board approve the use variance? However, maybe you should look at some different window treatments because I have mixed feelings. Like, do we really want it to look like a office? And I would, or, or do you want to have that enhanced feature with windows on the second floor to make it look like, to make it look more attractive? Because right now it looks like a blank facade which has one single plane. So maybe something for you to look at.
I'm over to that, just so the board knows. And I was only taking my vision and trying to make it look better. But if you think that look, look would be more acceptable, then I would direct the architect to go in that direction for when we come back in.
Sure. Maybe we can work that during the site plan review process part of it.
That's totally acceptable. Thank you.
I don't have any questions for the architect.
Uh, any of the other, Mr. Darje, you have any questions?
I don't, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Prosser?
I just have two, actually, sure. One's more of a comment, but it sounds like the, the apartments are going to be loaded from the rear, the entrance for the apartments. So just, I think a consideration would be if a potential ADA space goes back there, the accessibility to get in, into the entrance there. So you don't have it recessed at this point as you do in the front. So I think it's just something to consider as you're moving forward with the design. And then the second is a question, this might be more Mr. Testino. But the, it sounds like there's going to be some storage for the office in the basement. Was there storage previously for the, the last application?
I believe there was. Here, the whole plan has been for me to have my office. So I have 10 years' worth of files plus and, and with the cyber liability and all that, I've been going low-tech even more now than I have been keeping hard files. I'm required to keep them for seven years, but I typically keep them from 10 to 15 years in order to protect my clients. So it's a necessity that I have that, but the architect has given me some news that I might not be able to cost this thing out. So the first thing to go would be my storage space if I can't meet the numbers on this. So it's, it's, it's optional if I, if I have to go without it in terms of building, but it's my desire to have it. Because right now, having them onsite is, is so easy, so much easier to retrieve files. And Mr. Sax would know this, to retrieve files when a client calls for them in a real estate closing or, or something happens that you have to, to get some papers out. I just go to the file and get them out as opposed to going to a storage unit and getting them out.
That's, that's the intent.
But for kind of a comparison to the previous application, you had the intent of basement storage under that application. Okay.
Yes.
Great. Mr. Prosser, while you guys were speaking, I had an opportunity to take a look at the old site plan and it did indicate a basement floor elevation that was approximately 10 feet below the finished floor. So I believe that application did include a basement.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Sax, you have anything?
Yeah, well, first of all, just, and I agree with Mr. Testino. I think the, you know, you certainly want to have storage for your files. And, and I think your, your proposed office is going to be about 2,000 square feet. Is that the plan?
Yes, it's the one, it's the unit to the left where it goes downstairs.
Okay. I mean, just, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just to anecdotally give my information, like my office is about 17, 1800 square feet. I am a sole practitioner like Mr. Testino, so I don't think what he's proposing is out of the ordinary, out of character. I think it's, it's, it's a nice sized office for a sole practitioner. And I think, you know, the, the fact that we're agreeing not to have any medical usage in the, on the other side of Mr. Testino's office is actually a good thing. Certainly that would trigger some unusual parking demands. And I know Mr. Testino mentioned a title company. There's a title company right across the hallway from me in my office building, which is equivalent size to my office. So that would probably be a good use. I mean, I can envision other uses might be maybe an accountant's office, maybe an architect's office, maybe an engineer's office. So, you know, I, I, I think what was being proposed really is not out of the ordinary by Mr. Testino. And I would also concur with Ms. Ms. Swan that I'm sure Mr. Testa can be quite creative in terms of the finished elements of the exterior of the building. So that's something I think he should focus on during the site plan stage.
Thank you, Mr. Sax. Board members, anybody?
Scott, no question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Testino, what age group are you planning to rent to if it's not going to be any children?
I didn't limit the age group. I didn't say anything about that. I just, I would like to, I would like to rent to another professional who wants to have their office downstairs, but I don't know yet. It would be, it would be either singles or couples and that's it. But I'm not planning on restricting it in any way unless I was required to.
And Mr. Testa, regarding the bike racks design, where do you plan to ride these bikes? There's no path to ride these bikes. Route 34 doesn't offer any option to ride your bike on that highway.
I was responding to your planner's comment of possible bike storage. So if we, if we're so required to have it, there's space for it and there's the ability to store it inside the building as well.
It's a very dangerous road.
Anything else from Mr. Scott, though? Okay. Any other board members? You have another witness, Mr. Testa?
I do, Mr. Chair. I have before you my planner, Mr. Justin Osiello of the Confone Consulting Group. And I would offer him to be sworn at this time.
Mr. Sax?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Osiello, thank you. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes, I do.
Uh, please state your name, spelling your last name, professional affiliation for the record.
Justin Osiello, A U C I E L L L with Confone Consulting Group. I'm a partner with the firm and the address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Testified before boards before, correct?
Yes, I have. I've, I've testified in, in more than 150 municipalities in the state of New Jersey.
You accept Mr. Osiello's credentials?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Osiello, have you studied the subject site?
Yes, extensively.
And can you describe the, the site and the surrounding area or would you like to have the map brought up or how would you?
Yeah, if, sure. If Ms. Sawak can, can pull up the aerial, that would be great. And I can just, you know, where we hit the board, I mean, the board's, you know, well familiar, but I think the aerial is helpful for this application. That's, that's, that's perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much. So where the cursor is pointing is the, is the subject property. It's, it's delineated in the red hatch as, as Mr. Feis. Yep, there it is. It's identified on this aerial on the Old Bridge Township GIS as number 121. As, as you heard from, from, from Mr. Feis, the, the fire company is to the west and the, and the first gate squad is to the right. There's residential to the north. There's commercial that, that runs along Route 34. And across from the site is the, the spine center and also some, some scattered residential. I, I think from the planning standpoint, and this is just the introduction to the, the, the planning testimony, and I'll, you know, get into this later on. I think from the planning standpoint, what's, what, what makes this site unique in the context of the area is that it's narrow and has, the, the depth is substantial. It's substantially more deep than it is wide. And why is this helpful? From the planning standpoint, it's helpful because this allows for development that can be, be oriented, you know, you know, closer to Route 34 as is it currently, you know, stands today. There's a conservation easement. Mr. Feis had, had, had stated that in his testimony. That extends for the majority of the site to the rear. So the, the beauty of the site from, in, 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 you know, from my perspective, is that the majority of the site will never be touched. You know, so the, the building's going to be oriented to Route 34. And also, as you can see from the aerial, of course, I, I think this is a unique location being boarded by the, the first aid squad in the fire company and in a corridor with the, the mixture of uses. If Ms. Sawat can also pull up the, the site plan real quick, please? Thank you so much. And, and just from the, from the planning standpoint, you know, as you can see in, in the site plan, the, the layout of the site, the structure and, and the parking and the ancillary and the landscaping, that's all going to be oriented to, to Route 34 with the majority of the site. Just eyeballing it, it's approximately two-thirds, give or take, that will remain undeveloped. And of course, as Mr. Feis had testified, the, the stormwater basin will, there'll, there'll be a flow towards, towards Route 34. So when you're looking at it from the aerial standpoint and also from the, the site plan perspective, I think it's clear that, you know, when, when you look at impacts, and again, I'll talk about that, you know, later on. This is, this is a, a, a structure that's proposed. As you heard from, from, from Mr. Testa as well, it's, it's really consistent with the character of the area and especially the property that's, that's, that's right across the street. So, you know, really of, of minimal to no impact. With, with that said, Ms. Sawat, if, if it's your preference to leave this up, that's fine. But if not, I can just jump into the, the, the planning testimony. Thank you so much. So, so of course, this evening, we're here for a, a, a use variance. This is a application that's, that's bifurcated. We also do require a, a D5 variance for, for the density as well. So I'll just begin, just to talk about the, the, the standard of proof for a special reasons use variance. And this is from the Medici case and, and the Medici case prescribes a certain set of justifications or, or proofs that must be put on the record. The first is a showing of, of suitability and whether, whether or not this site is, you know, particularly suited to accommodate the proposed use. Of course, the proposed use being, being mixed use with, with, with commercial and residential. One of the first things as a planner that I always look to in in trying to determine what makes a particular site particularly suitable for a use is is the layout, is just the the layout of the site without, you know, you know, anything proposed. And in this instance, as I had previously said, it's 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 narrow, and it's very deep. So this, of course, this is in its essence, this is a site that is well suited for a structure that will be oriented closer to to Route 34. Even though we are not in the, you know, the the site plan phase, if the board so chooses to approve this application, this, of course, will go to site plan. And even though, you know, we're not here to talk about any any bulk variances, as you see in the in the planner's review letter, you know, this is a site that, you know, certainly can can accommodate, you know, you know, this use. Of course, there would be a side yard variance, and I think that is a consequence of the the narrowness of the site. But other than that, I I don't really see much in the way of major, you know, relief from the bulk standpoint, you know, for this use. So that's that's reason number one, why I think as a professional planner, this site is 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 particularly suited because there's there's sufficient space on this property to accommodate. Also, as I as I previously stated, this is on Route 34. It's a regional highway. This is really when when we look to mixed uses, you know, this is one of those one of those locations that we think it's appropriate. This will allow obviously easy access, not just from obviously Route 34, but the but Route nine, the Garden State Parkway, etc., which is a, you know, convenience, not just to whomever would would occupy, you know, you know, this site. I also think too, and I guess this is a matter of opinion. I also think it it's unique, you know, given that the it's located to the firehouse and the 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 first aid station. And really, there is residential on the other side of Route 34, and also you know, to to the rear. But what's proposed here, in my opinion, is not going to have, you know, much in the way of impact. And to a to a question from a board member early on about, you know, this could be, you know, this could be a nuisance to somebody who would potentially, you know, rent on this property. I see it as, you know, personally speaking, if I had an issue with that, I probably wouldn't rent here. So I think it's one of those instances that, in my opinion, I think the 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 location next to to the First Aid Squad and the firehouse actually makes the site unique for this this proposed use. Also, again, the the development is in the front half of this property, just like as the planning board had granted the approval back in 2019, you know, for for the office building. And also, as Mr. Testino and as Mr. Testa had had stated earlier, you know, this is an older building. I believe Mr. Testino had testified that this was or had stated, not testified, that this building was built in the 50s. So obviously, it's it's in need of a of a substantial improvement, much more curb appeal than 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 currently exists along a prominent, you know, location. So for those reasons, I believe that we do meet the the standard for suitability. The next aspect of justification is the special reasons or the the purposes of zoning from the MLUL, Municipal Land Use Law. I certainly believe, it's my professional opinion, that this is an application that that would advance the multiple purposes of the MLUL. I certainly think criteria G, sufficient space and appropriate locations, as you heard from 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 the engineer, and also in in my testimony, I think this is a site that certainly can accommodate this use. There's there's certainly there was sufficient space for the the commercial use or the office use that was approved in in 2019, given that this is a use, as Mr. Feis had testified, which actually has less trips, you know, less of a a traffic impact. And certainly, there would be, you know, less parking on the site because the demands are less, given the 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 mixed use nature. Certainly think that there's sufficient space on this property to accommodate. Criteria I, that's the the visual environment. Certainly, as you know, what currently exists versus that, and what's what's proposed, this is a visual environment that's going to be enhanced on the site, and also a visual environment that's going to be consistent with what's, you know, right across the street. And as as Mr. Testa, I believe, had stated, you know, the applicant will will work, you know, should the 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 board grant the approval, will work with the planner and the engineer to develop a product that the the town can can really be be proud of. You know, so I think really, you know, for for those reasons, you know, there are special reasons, there are purposes of of zoning that 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 will be, you know, furthered by this application. Relative to the the negative criteria, that that's a showing if the the proposal will substantially, you know, negatively, you know, impact the the purpose and the intent of the master plan, the zone plan, and the zoning ordinance. In in 2020, there was an update to the the 2017 master plan update. And this is noted on the page. Wait one second, please. This is noted on page three of the updated letter from Ms. Sawat that's actually dated today. And it's it states that the 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 update that's last dated May 19, 2020, it includes a recommendation of the OG zone properties, and it notes a few things that that are pretty interesting. It cites that 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 the the market trends are changing, and also the 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 needs for the the development. And it also states that the the structure of the GO zones should should be be looked to for for other non-residential uses. I think in this instance, and I'm not sure, and I'm not going to guess whether or not that this in in May of 2020, this was this was done with with COVID in mind, and really kind of the changing of of the marketplace is that, you know, we're all seeing. But but I think what's important here, and what's from the planning standpoint, what's important here is the language that's that's identified in on on page three of of the planning letter, changing market trends and development needs. I think this is an application that is really on point with that. Mr. Testino came to the planning board in the township in 2019, came with with the application for an office building, pure office, no residential, and he got the approval. Here we are in in 2021. The world has changed, you know, dramatically in in less than two years. And I think, in my opinion, that's 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 really consistent with the 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 changing market trends. So certainly, I don't see the the impairment to the master plan in this instance. And in fact, I, you know, think it's it's my opinion that that we are pretty, you know, squarely on point with with the changing trends, not just in the township and the county, the state of the country, but but the the world. So relative to whether to, you know, the impact on on the zoning ordinance, I certainly don't see a substantial impact to the zoning ordinance. The purpose of the township's zoning ordinance, for the most part, mirrors the the MLUL, the purposes of zoning that that are in there. I, you know, as I said, in the positive criteria over on the special reasons, this is an application that would advance multiple purposes of zoning. So I don't see the impact here. Relative to the 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 zone plan, the OG one zone, of course, does not permit residential. However, which is interesting in my analysis of the OG one zone is that it does permit hotels and motels. Now, I mean, obviously, they're not they're not what we what we call residential uses, but because they, you know, they're commercial, and they're they're transient in in nature for lodging, but there is still is a residential aspect there in the OG one zone, which is which is permitted. What's also interesting about the OG one zone is that it permits a the the occupation, the the home occupation as a as a principal permitted use, and the conditional uses are our home business and home professional office. So even though, you know, the residential zone is the a residential use is not permitted in the OG one zone, it already, it, you know, there's the it it contemplates a land use that that's, you know, that's that's secondary to a residential dwelling. Also, the OG one zone permits a variety of uses, and some are which, in my professional opinion, are are more intense. You know, and 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 but, you know, they they're uses that that can never really be developed on the site. But still, you know, these are uses that that are certainly more intense than a residential use, which, you know, as a whole, is going to generate much less in the way of of traffic impact. You know, so so even though, you know, in when I look to to reconcile the the zone districts of yeah, you know, not including a residential use in in the list of permitted uses, I I think that's clear that the OG one zone, it certainly has some elements of residential therein. So so again, and for those purposes, I don't see a substantial detriment to the the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. The the last prong of the negative criteria is is a showing if if the variance can be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good. And what 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 case law says is that, you know, any 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 application that requires variances, you know, two reasonable people can can disagree whether there's going to be a detriment or not. And certainly, any type of of development, whether it's residential, commercial, or industrial, two people can also think that there might be some detriment. So that's why the law states that that the detriment cannot be substantial. Just a few points here, and I'll wrap up. You know, there are less trips, less less trips that would be generated by by this mixed use. I've said that a bunch of times, but I think it's important to 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 state that in in terms of the negative criteria. The drainage, there is a basin that would collect water in the rear, and not in the rear of the property, but in the rear of the building, and that's going to 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 drain towards towards Route 34. So no impact on on the residential. That's that's to the north and the northeast of the site. Mr. Testa had agreed to no no medical office uses, which which is a a pretty pretty high impact on the on the hierarchy of of office uses. Also, I think what's also important here is Mr. Testa had designed this building to really have the the appearance of a of a commercial building. Again, I think people can can disagree whether they want to kind of jazz it up a bit more to make it a bit more residential. But I think in the context of the zone, and also the surrounding area, this is a this is a feature. This is a building that's really going to be consistent, you know, with that character. So so with that, I I believe, oh, and then one last thing, we also do require the the variance for the density. I believe it's a 2.71, which is proposed, whereas zero is permitted. Obviously, zero is permitted because because residential is not listed as a permitted use in the zone. The standard for density variance is is whether or not the site can 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 carry this use, can, you know, certainly, and it's it's my opinion that the site does have the ability, for all the purposes that I stated in my testimony. You know, certainly, the site does have the ability to carry that density. It's it's a relatively low-density project, you know, 2.71 dwelling units to the acre, certainly also in the context of the 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 depth that's on the site. I certainly don't see that providing for a substantial negative detriment on the public good. So with that, I believe that 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 the board with those justifications, you know, certainly has the ability to to grant the 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 use variance and the the density variance.
So it's obvious to me, Mr. Osiello, that you studied my site, and you've also studied the the ordinance here in town. So I thank you for your expert testimony. You did file a community impact statement with the board, and I just wanted to note that for the record, and if there's going to be any questions about that. Is that right?
Yes, I I did. And I'll just also note one one more thing. There was a there was a question or a comment from a member of the board that that had asked about if, you know, families or school-aged children coming onto the site. Rutgers University, going back to I think the 70s or early 80s, they've published a guide that's been updated on numerous occasions that essentially, I'm not going to go into great detail about how they do it, but there there are multipliers that that can be used to calculate the the demographic impact, either on population or or school-aged children. One thing, and this is something that I learned in planning school at Rutgers, and it's something that I apply in my practice every day, because I get questions from from clients all the time about impacts. Small apartments on in in general, they generate the least amount of of school-aged children. Four to five bedroom homes generate the most. Also, you know, you know, over time, it's been shown that especially, you know, higher end units, like what's proposed tonight, these are units that that tend to attract young professionals. Maybe they're single, or maybe, you know, they have they they have a spouse. But they also tend to attract empty nesters or or snowbirds. You know, people who don't necessarily don't really need much space, they don't have children. You know, people do not tend to flock to 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 one-bedroom apartments, or in 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 this instance, one two-bedroom apartment with children. And if they do have children, you know, they tend to leave before the children is of age to go to school. So I just wanted to put that on the record. I I think from the planning standpoint, it's important to establish that these the these these demographics have been studied for decades, and these type of apartments always tend to have the least amount of impact in population and and school-aged children, whereas a four to five bedroom, single-family home tends to have the most impact.
Now, you've already said that you've received and reviewed the planner's letter updated today, July 15. Do you have any other comments or questions regarding that?
I I do not. Just bear with me one second to see my notes here. I believe I believe there is a there is a comment page five, second paragraph, the applicant should testify regarding the use of the first floor. I believe that's been covered. And and you have also committed to not having medical office there, and that's covered as well. The traffic generation issue has been covered. The architectural plans, the the basement issue was was covered as well. And then the last the last comment here was this this triggers a a density variance, and and the the applicantship provide testimony while it's appropriate, that was covered as well.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Osiello, and I would rest with your your testimony and ask the chair if there are any questions from the professionals, or how he'd like to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Testino. Thank you, Mr. Osiello. Mr. Sawat?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So I don't have a specific question for Mr. Osiello, but I do want to give a little background because I know that the master plan was amended last year to include specific language that said that the OG zone within the township should be evaluated for alternative non- The OG zone within the township should be evaluated for alternative non residential uses. The emphasis was on non residential uses for a reason. And it goes back into the past twenty years. Although we don't, I mean, we we do, Old Bridge has a lot of apartment communities, but in the last twenty years. We have an approved GDP, which includes apartments which are not yet built. We went through our housing element and fair share plan, and when the court approved it. There were some intervenors wherein there will be additional apartments that will be built. In numerous places in the town. When the township adopted its economic development opportunity zone. The master plan that a reexamination had specifically. The planner had just suggested that they should consider adding residential use on the commercial, but that was. Turned down by the council because of the numerous apartments that have already been approved, but not yet built. So. In terms of that, the pulse of the town has been that we don't want more apartments in the town. They want to encourage. Homeownership. They want they don't want to encourage rental. Type of users. So, Mr. Ocelot, I know you mentioned it, but however, can you please reiterate? With the community impact statement, and I did read your community impact. So how many school kids would be generated? Because usually. It's looked differently when there is an age restricted type of a use, right? Because you have no school kids coming out of such developments. Now you have four units. So can you just reiterate on the community impact in terms of school? I I know I heard a lot about the traffic and I agree. So does Rakesh, but can you just emphasize on the population increase and the increase in the school kids?
Yes, yes, absolutely. And 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 thanks for the opportunity to do this. So in in the the community impact statement. Prepared by me and it was it was submitted in in March twenty twenty one, or it's it's dated March twenty twenty one. I get into the the impact on the on the population of this village children on on page four. Again, these multipliers were from Rutgers University. This is their their November twenty eighteen publication, which is. The the most recent. Prior to that, there was a publication in two thousand and six. This obviously, to the benefit of all planners, is is much more recent and and better. From the standpoint of of school age children. For 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 the for the three bedroom. For the three one bedroom units. The multiplier that's that's identified for apartments is is zero point one one one. And I understand that. Board members or members of the public may not really understand that. It's just really, it's not really something that's easy to understand, but. This is this has been done. They've crunched numbers. They've done a lot of a lot of mathematical. Work that's way above my mental capacity and 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 my my pay grade. So I really can't tell you how they develop those numbers, but those are the multipliers. That that are used by planners throughout the state in the the assessment of the the demographic impacts. So applying the multiplier for the three one bedroom units. Three times point one 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 is is point three three three. Obviously, people are not fractions. So we always it's 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 planning practice to round up to the next whole number, and that would be one. Public school age children. I I think it's also important to emphasize that this is a public. School age children that would would come into the the township school system. For the the two bedroom unit, there's one. The multiplier for that is point four seven seven. Obviously, it's greater than the one bedroom because there's the additional bedroom. And of course, point four seven seven multiplied by one is, you guessed it, point four seven seven. So round it up is one. So. That would be a a gain of 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 two school age children. That represents and they're currently or or in the last. Reporting year to the NJ NJ DOE Department of Education, there are approximately. About about eighty four hundred students in the school district. That represents an increase of point zero 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 two three of the the enrollment. And in the school district, so that certainly would not result. In in any increase in the need for for classroom space or staff.
Sure, thank you. I don't have any further questions for the planner. However, I know, I think it was Mr. Scogno who had. Asked or questioned about the bike lanes, the bicycle storage space that I asked for. The reason I asked for it is that Middle Six County has a bicycle pedestrian plan, which was developed in. Two thousand and two, and according to that plan, Route thirty four. Especially this area and then Route thirty four going to Spring Hill. There is supposed to be a bike lane connection. It's proposed, but it's in the plan. I have been working on other projects with NJ DOT, the county. The common consensus is to create a multimodal plan throughout most municipalities. Having bicycle lanes, having pedestrian connections, and that is why you might have observed that in every application. Miss Shapiro or me, we insist on having sidewalks and adding pedestrian connectivity. If possible, having wider shoulder. I I I agree that this is. State route, but however, I think because there is a vision for it. Any application that we go through, we should at least have, because once. In future, if if they happen to add a bike lane, we can't add the bike storage into the building, right? So it's better to be proactive and plan for the future. I know bicycling is promoted big time and has a lot of health benefits. So that's that's the reason why I asked, especially if you have younger couples or. Younger folks living in those three one bedroom apartments. I think it's a good amenity to have.
Well, I'm not disagreeing with you, especially since there's an interest to Cheesecake Steak Park right down the road here.
Yes, and I think that was the reason why the bicycle lane was even proposed. In that area. But yes, I I actually, while. Your planner was testifying, I went back to the the map I have. And I ratified before I responded. So that's.
The planning stamp. Yeah, I mean, you know, from the planning standpoint, I I I certainly agree. I I mean, I think anything. You know, that the applicant can do in in contemplation during if the board so chooses to approve this during the site plan aspect. That's a that's an extra benefit to the municipality, certainly would advance the general welfare. You know, of the community and 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 the and the 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 free flow of traffic. You know. Giving people the option to get on their bike and 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 not in their car. So. Planners, we always try to promote healthy communities and I would 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 certainly, you know, say. That's a that's a great point, Miss Alwan.
Mr. Alceta, could you pull up the the zone map so that the board can see it before we close or have the planner?
Yeah, I can pull that up. Do I have permission to?
Justin, I don't believe so. I'm not sure if the technician is still there, but what is this? Meaning a map?
Should be on the engineer's plan if you if you could pull his plan up.
Sure, just bear with me for a second.
Yeah, there there it is.
Yeah, just can we blow, can we enlarge that? So I don't know if the board can see it from here, but maybe you could tell them that. The 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 pink square there is the OG one, and that basically consists of. The firehouse, the school, the first aid and my lot. Is that how you read it?
That that's accurate, and I I would also I would also add here that the. If Miss Alwa, can you zoom in a little more if possible? I think it would be easier to see here, but what's which instructive about this, even though. You know, the R six zone, I I don't I don't have the requirements of the R six zone in front of me, but it looks like it's. Probably the the main principal use is is significantly residential, just by looking at the cul-de-sacs and and the development behind it. What's instructive is that this is a site that that's adjacent to to residential. So what's proposed is a product. You know, you know, even though it's a different type of residential, it's a product that that really isn't, you know, radically different than. The the overall, you know, residential character of the area and and residential certainly. Which is it's it's identified by yellow or orange. Depending on how your eyes are working at ten forty five at night. I certainly I certainly see that this is also a use of that's that's really consistent with the the overall character of the area.
Thank you. I just wanted to get the visual up there. I don't have any further questions of Mr. Ocelot unless the board has questions of him or other professionals.
Miss Suat, you were finished, correct?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Darji?
I don't have any questions for the applicant's planner, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Pross, anything? Comments?
No questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Sax.
No, I'm I'm fine, Mr. Chairman.
Let's go once around the board. Anybody have any questions for the planner? Mr. Dewhurst?
Not a question, a comment. The R six zone that was pointed out is quite a distance from Route thirty four. That's actually the Central Park section of Old Bridge. It's quite a quite a quite a distance down the hill from Mr. Testino's property. For even at the back of it, just for informational purposes.
Good, thank you. Anybody else?
Interesting that you say that because when I've been here for years, I didn't realize that my property went up against. The neighbor's house down the hill and then a tree fell and she called me. I had to cut it. So, I mean, that's how close I am to Central Park. So, yeah, you're right.
That's where you probably had to make your way through a lot of leaves to get through, huh?
Lot of poison ivy, believe.
Know the area very well.
Any any other board members? None. And Mr. Testino, I'm assuming that was your last witness for the evening?
That is my last witness and.
You have any objection to me going to a public portion at this time?
Not at all, Mr. Chair.
This is matter twelve dish twenty twenty one Z. Its location is one two one Route thirty four. Remote building for office and four apartments, three one bedroom, one two bedroom. If you have any interest in this matter, whether it be questions or comments, there's phone numbers up in front of you on whatever screen you're watching on. Please call in immediately to one of those numbers. We will put you live to speak to the board. Is there anyone in queue?
No.
Raise hands.
We'll just give it a short period of time, please. Once again, I know it's been a long presentation. But if you're watching and you have interest in this matter, now would be the time to call.
No raised hands.
Mr. Sax, your opinion?
Mr. Chairman, we can close the public portion.
Thank you. Public portion is hereby closed. Mrs. Testino, you have any final comments?
Just briefly, Mr. Chair, I wanted to thank the ladies and gentlemen of of the. Board and tell you that tonight, we believe. That the proposal before the board demonstrates the required special reasons, provides an. Aesthetically pleasing improvement to the community. More importantly, we demonstrated with clear and convincing evidence through the planning testimony that their. Negative. Criteria have have been exceeded and have been met. He's laid it out quite clearly that the proposal is unique and it's uniquely situated to the site. We provided the expert testimony demonstrating the special reasons of of the site itself and the ability to develop it with. Out negative community impact, and I'm requesting therefore. That you grant the the variances requested and that we be allowed to move to the. Next phase of of engineering and planning and come back before the board for site plan and. Any other variances that are needed as a result of the development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Testino. I just note for the record that there was one memo wasn't mentioned. It's from. Keith Brennan, the Spire Subcode Official Reference this matter. He says, I reviewed the revised plans on six twenty nine twenty one. And I find them satisfactory at this time. Note that proposed building will need to be sprinkled, suppressed per code, and the water services will need to be sized accordingly.
We did receive that, Mr. Chair, and we acknowledge it, and I've given it to my professionals.
Thank you very much. Board, before we take a a vote, this is is a bifurcated application. So really, all we're voting on is whether we want to grant the use. And then if that survived, then we would, the the second vote would be. Not only are we granting the use, but are we granting the density? So there would be, I would believe, two votes, Mr. Sax, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
The D one followed by a D five. Before I do that, is there any board member that has issues that would like to be brought up now before we take a vote? Anything needs to be addressed. Ms. Kilduff?
I have a question for Mr. Dewhurst.
Yes.
There are, are there paid firemen at Cheesecake?
Yes.
Do they spend the night?
No.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, any other board member? All right, hearing none, then I'd be correct, Mr. Sax, you would instruct us as to D one use variance.
Jim?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Ms. Andrews has a question.
I'm sorry. Oh, she's she's in the top left square. Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, but yeah, I just wanted to know at at any time since the one on five sixteen, has any other. Have any other people come up wanting to build above a retail store or above another office building? Has that ever come up before and has it been approved?
Yes.
Or has it been approved?
Just on Route thirty four? No, but five sixteen had one. We've had various multi-use office with residential over the years that I can recall. On thirty four itself.
No, not not necessarily just on thirty.
Yes.
Have any have any of them been denied?
Mr. Sax, do I?
Well, I I don't know if any of them have been denied. I we've had, you know, I mean. I've been I've been the board attorney for fifteen years or so. We've had many applications for multi-use that have been approved. We've had some that have been denied. But but every application stands on its merits. So you've got to listen to the proofs that have been provided by their professionals and the comments from our professionals.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, no, I I what I'm saying is that you every case stands on its own merits. So I mean, you've heard some compelling testimony from the planner and from from the engineer. I'm sorry to cut you off. You had a question now?
No, no, I just wanted to say then there's never been any type of a lawsuit. With the town of Old Bridge because something was denied that someone had received a a similar situation.
Well, we we. You're asking a very generic question. We've had we've had a number of lawsuits on applications that have been denied. Some of those, some of those lawsuits, we've been successful and some of them we have not been. So again, you've got to you've got to carefully listen to the to testimony of any application. And I think the professionals in this case have done a very good job of of approving their case. You know, that's that's all I can tell you. I mean, I it any and by the way, anything that's happened in the past. On any application on any other site is irrelevant for purposes of this application, totally irrelevant. on any application on any other site is irrelevant for purposes of this application, totally irrelevant.
So that's, that's nothing as setting a precedent that if you accept something that you can, you can't deny something similar that comes up in the future.
That's, well, that, that's, that's essentially correct because every piece of property is located in a zone. You may have an application ten years from now on a similar application, maybe an entirely different zone, maybe entirely different circumstances, maybe a lot that can't accommodate the use, but maybe it's a much smaller lot. So again, you've got to, you've got to look at the totality of the circumstances when you make your decision. So no, you don't, you don't set precedent in a zoning case, not at all, never. All right, because everything stands on its own merits. Every case is different.
Okay, Ms. Uh, Ms. Andrews?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, and did I miss any other board member? Okay, I'm seeing none, okay. Board, we're gonna, uh, the, uh, vote would be for D one use variance, uh, whether or not the burden of proof has been met, whether it's site suitable, uh, that will be your individual decisions. Is there someone in favor of moving this or denying it? All right, I'll move, uh, I'll vote in favor of, uh, the D one, uh, variance. Is there a second?
That game killed up.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dewhurst?
Um, well, while at first I was not in favor, because I thought we were going to be rezoning, as one of our former members would say all the time, um, we don't know that person. I, I absolutely, as looking at this, I, I actually think the combination of having housing and, uh, retail or commercial space kind of covers both areas, and I think, uh, I think it's gonna be a nice building for something that's, you know, a improvement on thirty-four, so my vote is yes.
Okay, Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Mr. Scargno?
Well, because of the reasons I noted earlier about the traffic and the firehouse and, and the first aid, and it's just not suitable for residents living in that location, my vote is no.
Okay, Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Psychowski?
No.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yeah, I, uh, I, I don't think there's any traffic issue here whatsoever. I don't think it could have a less, uh, uh, a, a situation where there's less generation. Uh, it's already an office, and adding the apartments, I think, will enhance it. Uh, I don't think there's any detriment to the zone or the public good, and I, I think the site is suitable. I believe they've met their burden of proof, so my vote is yes.
Okay, it approved?
D one's approved. Now we gotta do the, uh, D five.
All right, board, this is the variance.
Larry, on this one, um, does, uh, Mr. Scargno and Mr. Psychowski vote on this?
Uh, you know what? They probably can't. I guess they could, they could deny a D one and, and grant a D five. That's their prerogative.
Okay.
Yes.
Just verifying.
Yep.
All right, as to D five board for density, this would be, uh, I, I think it was called two point seven, uh, dwelling units per acre where there's zero is allowed because there's none allowed in the zone. So, uh, someone want to move the density issue?
I'll move it to first.
All right, I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dewhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Mr. Scargno?
No.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Psychowski?
No.
Chairman Sullivan?
For all the aforementioned reasons, yes.
Okay.
The application's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Was there a C variant somewhere in there?
The Cs will be dealt with at the side plant stage.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Believe that's it for this evening, Mr. Chair. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Testino and all your professionals.
Thank you. Have a good evening and have a good weekend.
Thank you, sir. Board members, we've reached, uh, a, uh, point here, uh, that I don't think we can continue until ten, it's three minutes to eleven. Mr. Sax, would, uh, it be proper to, uh, read the, uh, last application in and take, uh, jurisdiction?
Yes.
All right, uh, is Mr. Klauser there?
Yes, he's standing there.
Mr. Klauser, I, I, I just in clear conscience, I can't keep people here after eleven. Uh, I'm sorry that we couldn't get to, to this tonight, and, uh, I apologize, but things just ran a little long, and we had some complex, uh, issues with the, uh, technology.
Would you, would you indulge me for a moment just so that I can do my job on behalf of my client?
Absolutely, sir. You want me to read, read it into the record or no?
Yeah, yeah, yes, please, please read it into the record, and if I can just have one minute of the board's time, and then, and then I'll, I'll listen to the.
Okay, by Mr. Sax. Yes, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, this is matter twenty-five, this twenty twenty-one Z, uh, EOM five, three, eight, Route thirty-four LLC, located five, three, eight, Route thirty-four. This is an amendment to prove, uh, to permit, uh, different uses. It's in the R thirty zone requiring a D variance. Peter Klauser is representing. Mr. Sax, are we taking, uh, jurisdiction on this matter?
Yes, we can, Mr. Chairman. We can, uh, I've reviewed the proof of service, the notices, the affidavit of publication. So the board does have jurisdiction, so yes, you can accept jurisdiction this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Sax. Mr. Klauser?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. The first thing I'd like to do is, is just, you know, thank the board for, for being here and for, for at least giving me a moment to be heard. Um, the, the application that was filed with the board asked for a, a number of different uses to be approved. Working with your professionals and the importance to this particular applicant, we agreed to, uh, wash away all of those uses except for medical. So if I, if I have a moment for the board to think about it, the only thing we're gonna ask for is medical office space to be used here. And while the board is not normally, uh, by the board should not consider any financial issues, and I'm not going to with regard to the substantive nature of the application, there are a number of things in play for this applicant timing-wise with regard to financing and leases. And so that's why I'm asking if the board has any indulgence to hear any part of this application tonight. It would be very valuable to the client from that perspective. It has nothing to do with the actual vote. Uh, but, Mr. Chair, I, I respect your procedures, but I have to ask. Um, but with that noted, the, the only thing we're asking for, if we did distill the application down to one building being utilized for medical offices, all of the other uses that were part of my application, I spoke with Vina, and she said, "Peter, if medical is what's most important, we can handle the other stuff at a later date with another application altogether, so we only want one building for medical. Uh, that is it."
No, I understand that, Mr. Klauser, and, and I know the board acted on this, uh, favorably a number of years ago, presented by, uh, uh, another firm, but, uh, nonetheless, it may not be the time of night where everyone has that recollection and is aware of what's going on. So I, I would feel remiss by holding the board over, uh, to start something at this hour. Uh, had you gotten started earlier, I may have permitted some, uh, but we, it was already eaten up, uh, past the ten thirty mark. So I really have to say a no to this tonight, and I don't like doing that. I know there's a lot of money involved in these projects, uh, and it's time and effort on your part and the professionals that are standing by, and I'm assuming that's Ms. Coffin. So I, I'll apologize, but I, I just don't think it's fair to the board to proceed any further. Mr. Mr. Sax, am I, uh, within my right to, to say so?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I, I, you know, I understand, uh, Mr. Klauser's, uh, uh, position. I understand the, the needs of his client, uh, but by the same token, this is a volunteer board. Uh, we've been at it for three and a half hours this evening. We haven't even taken a break tonight. Um, so, uh, that's a little unusual. Um, Mr. Chairman, if, if it's not gonna be heard this evening, we have accepted jurisdiction. Uh, so obviously, it's now considered old business, and Ms. Silverman, if we were to carry it to the next meeting, that would be August fifth?
Correct.
What else do we have that evening?
Uh, you have two D variances and one C.
All right, so obviously.
There's small D variances.
All right, but, but, all right, but in any event, this, this certainly would be considered old business. It'll, it'll get reached that evening, uh, I think with some assurance, Mr. Klauser.
That would be, and that's all that's on, there's no, nothing else to be added.
When you say you have small Ds, you have some floor area, D four variance applications?
Yes, they.
Minor applications, okay, gotcha. Okay.
Yes, um, uh, I, I lost my question, Larry. Are, are we, are we, are we virtual still in August, or is any?
Yes, you are. I have all the codes and everything.
So can we, can we carry this without notice, or do?
The only thing now I'm gonna request you, uh, you might not have to certify, return, receipt it, but you definitely have to certify it, and you probably have to put in the newspaper.
Yeah.
It is a Zoom meeting.
Because the, because the codes change.
Yes.
Okay, I, I, Kim, if you could just get me those codes as soon as possible, because I'm gonna be away, and I, I wanna get Nicole.
Tomorrow morning, tomorrow morning, okay?
Yeah, that would be great. Mr. Chair and board members, thank you very much for letting me at least ask, and, and I understand, and I, I appreciate you being here, and I, I don't wanna, no disrespect. Thanks for letting me ask.
No, no disrespect, Mr. Klauser. I wish I could grant it. Uh, I just think we went beyond the hour, and usually I'm pretty flexible, but.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
Well, thank you.
I'll, I'll see you on, I'll see you on the fifth.
Yes, very good, sir.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Uh, board, do we have any final, uh, matters, uh, on the agenda? Larry?
Uh, well, Larry, one quickie question. Have you met up with anybody in the judicial areas?
Well, it seems like every trial that Judge McCluskey has, has been, gets adjourned. So the, uh, you know, he's, I guess he's doing other stuff now, so I, the, um, Metro, the Metro storage case has been adjourned, and I don't even have a date on that. And the, uh, Old Bridge Rifle Club case has been adjourned, and I don't have a date on that, so.
Okay, just let it ask.
Yeah, and I, and I, I'm not sure when the courts are going to reopen in person. Um, I, I've been told September first, but I don't know. I think that may be, that may get extended, so.
Okay.
All right. Uh, I'm sorry that I, I kept everybody tonight, but thank you all for, uh, standing, uh, sitting still and hearing, hearing that matter out. We did get that, uh, we got a lot of business done tonight. Unfortunately, it did go a little long.
In the future, if you're not, we're not gonna have breaks, tell me so I don't drink all the water.
Well, I saw, I saw you walk away from the screen a couple of times. Oh, don't worry, I was taking notes, so nobody had balls, so I'll be able to do it at a later time. I have nothing else. Kim, you got anything?
No, that should do it for now.
Okay, we'll meet again soon. Uh, enjoy the summer.
Oh, wait, but take a vote?
Yep.
Well, I'm gonna call for an adjournment.
Okay.
But I wanted to preface that by telling everybody, have a good time, be safe. All in favor of an adjournment?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. We stand adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night.
Everybody.